You're quick. Yeah, I just, um, what it will do, um, just to begin the hearing once Melissa will, we'll just kind of highlight those couple of small tweaks on the, just so in case anyone had to comment on it.
Okay. Welcome to the Board of Education meeting. I'm just going to wait until there is a quorum.
Lauren, as I mentioned there, I just want to highlight a couple, um, line items that we just felt we wanted to clarify because again, this as the up, as the information that is updated through the, the Department of Health that obviously we talked about the impacts of the portion that we're going to be discussing tonight. And I also just wanted to just, I'm just going to highlight it. And then of course people can comment.
Yes.
But, uh, you know, we decided best as things keep evolving to, to tweak the language to kind of say, we're, you know, it'll be adjusted per, you know, what's going on at the department health level. Because since we put, put it in, it's changed already. So.
Okay, we're just waiting for one more board member to join us so that we can begin the, excuse me, begin the meeting.
Thank you. Jody has to be promoted more.
Okay. Um, so welcome to the Board of Education meeting on Wednesday, March 10th, 2021. We already opened the meeting previously at 6:15. When we went into executive session, we've now had motion to resume public session and we actually are now in a public hearing to discuss the district wide safety plan. Districtwide safety plan whenever updated needs to include an opportunity for public hearing. And Maureen Carballo has prepared the updates and just wanted to share with, with all of us what those updates are.
Sure. So as Lauren said, um, this, this year, as you may recall, we adopted our safety plan. The governor, a few months after it was adopted, had required districts to now incorporate a pandemic section. Really it's public health is what it's called. It's not really pandemic, protocols for public health emergency. And we are required to have this hearing and have the plans updated to the state by April 1. Just to kind of quickly go over, of course, the plan this year really focuses on the, the current situation we're in. But as we look to next year and updating this plan, we, you know, there will be some tweaks to it as this would cover, you know, other types of things that could come up in the future. Right now it really reflects, of course, COVID-19. As I had just briefly stated in the beginning of the meeting, what we are finding as from the time we originally met to work on this update. And again, much of it was guided by our consultant Al Terrace, who, who provides support to districts with their safety plans and does this regionally. We, I had mentioned in going back over some of the items that some of the items that we had initially folded in have already either been changed. And, and I have actually the attached attachment to the agenda we've reflected, we did make some of those tweets today. And I just want to highlight them just in case, you know, anyone comment, had a comment on those. On page 23, we just want to make sure people, we, we changed the language to reflect the district will follow. And this is to do with quarantining for both infected individuals as well as exposed. We just are going to align to the New York State Department of Health and Westchester Department of Health guidelines. Things have changed. We know that, you know, there was a time in which quarantine was 14 days or negative tests. We are reflecting, we, we, instead of having this constantly needing to be updated, I've changed the language to kind of say, we'll adhere to whatever. Because it may change and it could change again in the opposite direction. So we felt that that's what we've been doing. That's what we're required to do. So in this plan, we're just, instead of mentioning particular days as we did initially, we have now changed it to adhere to what is currently in practice and what, which will continue to be. We also, under the portion on page 21, that, that just gave some examples of ways to reduce overcrowding. We did remove, just not to cause any confusion, the, the part that says employees may be, may be permitted to work remotely. Because we felt as though that, you know, just as part of kind of the different examples that we didn't want that to, we didn't think it was appropriate there. And, and, you know, employees work remotely when, when we have a quarantine and such. And, and that's, and because that's not, the governor is the only person that can actually put us into remote learning. So again, just because we didn't think it was clean in that section, we felt it best to remove. And again, it was just examples. It wasn't something that we had to do any of them. But it just said, these are some things you may be, may, you could do if you were trying to reduce overcrowding. So that, those are the updates and then everything else really is, um, follows a lot of our, our reopening plan. Much of it is covered in that. But again, it was a requirement to have this. So I just wanted to provide those updates. You know, again, it is a, as everything in our safety plan, it evolves, it changes, it's a living document. We do throughout, you know, we have made updates before and we're now already looking, awarding the process of, of working on our next year plan. That, that will need to be, you know, put forth in the summer.
So that's. Thank you, Maureen, for explaining the updates to the district wide safety plan. It is a public hearing prior to seeing if there are any folks from the public who want to address specifically this district safety plan. Do any board members have any comments or questions about the alterations to the plan? Okay. Are there any, if there are any members of the public who are attending this public hearing regarding the district wide safety plan? If you could please raise your hand, use the raise your hand feature at the bottom of the Zoom page. And District Clerk Melissa DeLaBrera will give you access to address your question or concern specifically to the district wide safety plan. Melissa, do you see any members of the public who have a comment regarding the district wide safety plan?
No, not, no, not right now.
Okay. Thank you, Maureen, for preparing the changes that were required of our district wide safety plan. It's, I know, been a lot to manage the ongoing shifts that the district has received in regard to the public health crisis. So thank you for addressing this specifically in our plan. And we will, as Maureen mentioned, we do routinely have a hearing every September at the start of the school year is required to be updated. These updates were performed in addition to the annual requirements that were put forward by New York State. So now we will begin the regular Board of Education meeting. I want to welcome all trustees and student trustees, administrators and teachers and folks from the public who are joining us. It's just before 7:30, but I do know the links have been live since 7:15. Before we begin, I just want to share that in recent weeks, the board has heard from some in the community who are, who have been horrified by the increase nationally in racially motivated hate crimes and violence against Asian Americans. And the incidents are not isolated. And while we are unaware of any specific occurrences in Hastings, we are motivated to say that we stand in solidarity with our Asian American students and employees of the district. And we also stand behind our policies, ensuring that we are not tolerating acts of hatred against any individual or group on school grounds and that all students and employees of the district have the right to feel safe and respected. And with that, Dr. Henning Piedmont, do you have any announcements?
Thank you so much and good evening again, Board of Education trustees. Um, just a few announcements for you. We had quite a number of student related interactions this week. So starting on Tuesday, the student and board liaison group met. It's a smaller subset of the group of students who come together to share some of their, you know, thoughts and plans and what they're working on. So they actually are preparing a survey now that they'll administer to the student body just to, you know, collect some information from them. They feel a need to find ways to have children, there's, you know, the class, their classmates reconnect with each other. So that's, that'll be information shared with us and, you know, and we'll be able to share it with you. So I want to thank that group in advance, the student government of Hastings High School in advance for, for, for doing that. We also met today, Ms. Samansky and I met with our student, our superintendent's advisory students during lunch. Just a few of them showed up and what they talked about was the excitement associated, excitement and apprehension associated with returning all in on April 12. They talked about, you know, some of the end of year activities and what they wished for in terms of, you know, whether it's senior prom or your junior dance. But a lot of, a lot of excitement, but also some, you know, some, some apprehension. So we were very happy to have the opportunity to talk to them. The third student related conversation that we had was also today, it was the time to talk about racism. Conversation with, with students are Ms. Samansky, Mr. Stewart and I were present, a couple of students were present. They talked about the violence against Asians and Asian Americans and the students who were there and we all talked together about that. And they talked about, you know, the notion of, you know, how it's so important for us to make sure that in our teaching, we talk about some of these issues. And we help to, you know, clarify the record and also integrate historical information that may not be readily known. They also talked about microaggressions, which were, you know, potentially, you know, sometimes more visible than, than, than we might want to imagine. So I want to thank them for their, your candor and just engaging us. And this is a group of, or an opportunity, it's not the same group of students, but it's an opportunity for students to meet. And we started that at the end of last, of the previous summer when there were, you know, it was, you know, during the summer where George Floyd died and, 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 you know, there was a number of student led protests and, and rallies that had been staged. So that was an opportunity to continue a conversation with students. So we thank them for doing that. I'd also like to just remind everyone that last week we had the kickoff of our reopening committee. After a brief introduction, the three building school reopening committees met to start talking about recommendations, any concerns and any prospective solutions that they might have to some of those recommendations and concerns. Today was the second meeting of the school based, school reopening committees. The, again, it was a continuation of gathering feedback from the parents and faculty and staff who participated. The next meeting that will take place will actually be a board work session that will consider some of those recommendations or listen to some of those recommendations, concerns and solutions. And that will be followed by a pre-recorded meeting by the three principals or three leadership teams on March 25th. That will actually review some of the changes that are proposed. And we are certainly mobilizing and doing everything possible to make sure that we do in fact reopen safely on April 12th for all students. On March 19th, the Farragut Middle School Grade Five musical will take place at 7:00 PM. So make sure that you look for the links, the link to participate in that. I want to thank in advance Maureen Carballo and our budget managers this evening, which are our Hillside Elementary, Farragut and Hastings High School and our special education administrators who will be presenting their budgets this evening. And then at the next budget meeting, we will have the other group of our budget managers presenting. Congratulations again to the administrators and faculty and staff of Hastings High School for being selected as number two among high schools in Westchester County around certain indicators such as average class size, student to teacher ratio, student to counselor ratio. And, and students, number of students who take AP or IB courses as well as college and career readiness. So congratulations again for all the great work, for all of the research, you know, all of the people, everyone in, in the high school who, who is dedicated to this, maintaining this level of excellence. So thank you so much. Um, we placed our order for our Bynax Now surveillance test. So those are already here. And we'll be meeting next week to organize how we, how we will convert the existing micro cluster initiative plan that we all had to develop into a plan of how we will test some of our students with parental consent that we, that we return that week of April 12th. So we'll be working out the logistics of that and making that known to our community. We are still awaiting guidance from the New York State Department of Health relative to the provisions around six feet of social distancing in the classrooms, whether that will be maintained or whether the New York State Department of Health will reduce that. And if so, it will have to come from them that's, you know, right now are what's, what's in place that we are honoring is six feet of physical distancing. And if we don't and can't maintain the six feet of physical distancing, the use of our desktop partitions as well as other barriers that have been made available in the classrooms. The other piece of information that we are waiting from the New York State Department of Health has to do with what the, what happens if a fully vaccinated person comes into contact with a person who's exposed. The big question is whether or not that the, you know, the fully vaccinated person actually has to be quarantined. We are awaiting the, the, you know, that sort of clarification from the New York State Department of Health. And as soon as that's made available, we'll be sharing that. And I want to thank our building leaders and our, you know, our Joe Materato and his team and Maureen Carballo and everyone for helping to get all the furniture moved back into the classrooms and work with each building to make sure that they have all the resources, materials that they need to, you know, move us towards that April 12th return of all of our students. So thank you so much. And thank you for, I think to the Board of Education, all Board trustees for all of your assistance and support in making sure that we were able to move in this direction and move and do so safely, but do so under the guidance of the New York State Department of Health. The governors, any of the, you know, any orders from the governor as well as our Westchester County Department of Health. I want to thank the Westchester County Department of Health for making available to our Hastings faculty and staff vaccination appointments for any faculty or staff member tomorrow and Friday who have not received their first shot. So that is pretty significant. You know, as you know, we have had a member of our clerical staff who, Connie, who's works in our facilities office, who's been working with anyone who hasn't been able to obtain their first, you know, any vaccination. And so she's been very successful, but this addition tomorrow and Friday is really, you know, timely. And, and we already have a number of people who have already received their appointments and they're ready for their first shot this week. So thank you very much. And thank you to County Executive Vladimir's Office and to the Westchester County Department of Health.
Thank you, Valerie. Melissa Samansky.
Good evening, everyone. So the following science research update from Melissa Shandrop is worthy of recognition and celebration. Two former science research students, David Dayen and Christian Healy of the class of 2019, and their mentor Craig O'Connell of the OC's Conservation Foundation had their work published this month in the Marine Technology Society Journal. The title of their paper is "The Use of Baited Remote Underwater Video Systems to Non-Invasively Characterize a White Shark Nursery Area Off Eastern Long Island, New York." David and Christian collected and analyzed hours of video footage to help them determine that the area off Eastern Long Island does in fact meet the criteria of a nursery. Their findings can help lead to conservation efforts to protect the white shark population. David's currently studying animal science at Cornell University and Christian is a dual major in environmental science and film. Diversity Committee, our most recent diversity committee meeting took place on February 25th. And our session focused on racial literacy work grounded in the work of Dr. Yolanda Celia Ruiz around archaeology of the self. As one aspect of our work together, we explored her pyramid of racial literacy development, which at its foundation is grounded in critical love. She describes critical love as a profound ethical commitment to caring for the communities we work in. Committee participants also self-selected discussion questions to unpack in breakout rooms. Our middle school racial equity day took place on March 2nd. I'd like to thank on behalf of the faculty, thank you to Hastings Education Foundation, the Race Matters Committee and the Racial Equity Day Planning Committee for the middle school. We were delighted to welcome three speakers, two of which were funded from Race Matters Committee. Dr. Dieter Price Dennis helped us to explore what racial equity means and emphasized honoring everyone's humanity. Dr. Yolanda Celia Ruiz, whom I just referenced, invited our community to think about how critical love is interconnected with the archaeology of the self. And thank you to our Hastings Education Foundation who funded Mr. Richard Blanco, former inaugural poet. And he read poems, he wrote emphasizing that the idea of home is all encompassing, including the dimensions of language, where you live, your culture and your relationships with others. And finally, the K-12 Mathematics Committee convened last week. The focus of the session was to engage in an inquiry within vertical cross building breakout groups that was anchored in student artifacts. This was a continuation of the work that began during the previous session within the building base breakout groups that we had. And moving forward, we hope to bring Kathy Williams, co-founder and executive director of U-Cubed from Stanford University back into our sessions to push our thinking as an expert in the field. So thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Ms. Samansky. Maureen, did you have comments now or are you going to?
Yeah, I, I, most of my comments are going to be provided during the update of the capital plan and during the budget session this evening. I did just, one item I wanted to mention, this evening, we want to thank the PTSA SEPTA and the Education Foundation. They have approved additional funding for the school for, out of their COVID, their COVID grants. They have approved additional funding for the school for out of their COVID, their COVID grants. And they actually did alert us today that they've been able to vote and approve that. And we're going to be using that, those funds to provide additional outdoor seating, classroom and eating spaces. As well as procuring additional air purifiers for each classroom. So we really thank them for their support. And this will help us in our efforts with our reopening in April.
That's great. Thank you, Maureen. I see both Sophia and Sabine here. Welcome. Please, if you have a student report.
Yep.
Good evening, everyone. Here are a few things currently happening in the high school. RC Swim has their first virtual meet on Tuesday and other sports within the fall two category have also begun their seasons. Student Union is hosting a Batman tournament scheduled for late March. And select members of the SCU are also creating multiple surveys that are going to be sent out to the student body. Many students are very excited about the option to be fully in person starting next month. Being in school five days a week adds another return to normalcy. And many students are glad that the social aspect of school will be almost nearing a typical year. Now Sophia is going to say a few words discussing some research that she completed dealing with the climate in Hastings. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. For a recent assignment, my classmates and I were challenged to analyze a current issue affecting Hastings. As the student liaison to the Board of Ed for the past two years, I chose to look at the fractured relationship between the central administration and teachers. I interviewed teachers, board members and the superintendent. The contentious relationship between teachers and administration has recently been brought to public attention. However, I want to highlight that being left out of the process of the pausing of the book was the tipping point for many teachers, not the ignition. There's no need to rehash this topic. Instead, I will, I will inform you of other instances teachers have felt ignored and disrespected. A prime example was the reconfiguration of the library. The classroom inside the library was turned into a copy room, so the old copy room could be used as an administrative office. Now the librarian must teach her middle school classes in the center of the library, which has closed the library to all high school students. Multiple teachers I interviewed claimed they had formally opposed this change. Longstanding teachers know how important the library is to students and they attempted to express this. Banning students, even after several respected teachers raised red flags, has been perceived as an unwillingness to actually listen to and trust teachers. Again, teachers felt ignored and disrespected when the middle school switched to a 40-minute schedule. According to teachers on the scheduling committee, the new schedule was not recommended for this year. The new schedule was implemented. The teachers I spoke with felt the committee was formed for appearances only. And they resented the pretense that the administration really cared about their opinion, even more than the decision itself. And in another instance where teachers felt their work and time was not valued, they were informed by email. They had to transfer all their lesson materials from Microsoft to Google within a short period of time. Yes, this may have been a necessary change, but the lack of teacher buy-in led to an unhealthy relationship. In which teachers felt their work and time was not valued. These instances my research uncovered revealed that teachers are constantly feeling ignored and disenfranchised. Because of the manner in which decisions are being made and because of a lack of communication from administration. It's not the content of the decisions themselves. It's conventional wisdom that boss employer relationships improve productivity. And it's the same in education. Experts agree that positive teacher administration relationships promote collaborative and supportive cultures. Which improve students academic devotion and motivation. So even if just for the sake of our students, teacher unhappiness should be taken seriously. Many seniors have been talking openly about the discrepancy between a school that promotes a positive social emotional learning environment. When teachers are saying the school has become a culture of fear. A seniors, we're leaving next year. What goes on in Hastings won't affect us. But our teachers' commitment, positivity and intelligence has led us to have such successful high school experiences. We want our younger classmates and siblings to have the same. In Hastings, our teachers have taught students that our voices deserve to be heard. And I urge the board to help foster communication where all voices, including teachers, are valued and heard. Thank you.
Thank you, Sabine and Sophia. We'll move on to public comment. I want to remind all participants in the meeting that public comment, the first public comment is an opportunity to speak. On matters that are pertaining to this evening's agenda, which is posted online. Your comments will be limited to three minutes. Please state your name and if you're a resident of Hastings. And I want to remind all participants of our policy, which does not allow discussion of district personnel. Or students in public session.
Lisa Litvin.
Yes, thank you. I live in Hastings and I'm speaking to ask that you table your vote tonight on your minutes because they're incomplete. A few weeks ago, each board member received a resignation letter from Farragut English, Farragut Middle School teacher Adrian Foreman. Which detailed her reasons for leaving and included serious criticisms of the district. You approved her resignation at the last meeting, but you did not share Ms. Foreman's critical resignation letter with the community. Instead, you did something you haven't done before. You shared instead a simple three sentence email announcing the resignation written by Ms. Foreman's supervisor, Principal Jen Spirelli. Which had no criticisms of the district. The failure to post the original letter was a marked change of your practice. In the past, every resignation and retirement letter that the board has shared with the public has always been written by the person who's leaving. And not by their supervisor or anyone else, be they a teacher or a leave replacement. I could not find even one example where you deviated from this practice. Why the different treatment here? Sadly, the only conclusion that I in the public can infer is that Ms. Foreman's letter detailed serious criticisms of the district and of leadership. And the board didn't want the public to know these concerns. So Ms. Spirelli was asked to write a short neutral note announcing the resignation, which could be shared. Here's where the minutes come up. During the last meeting, the board noted that you all had privately discussed which of the two letters to share with the public. And decided to share Principal Spirelli's neutral letter rather than Ms. Foreman's critical one. The board also noted that the decision was not unanimous. New York law requires that decisions made by a public board of education be written up in the public minutes. And specifically list which board member voted how, even if the decision was made in private properly or improperly. This information is critically important for the public to know because board elections are coming up in May and three of you are up for reelection. Voters need to know who of you chose to abandon your past practice and swap in the soft neutral ladder, letter. Rather than share Ms. Foreman's critical letter. Why? Because to many of us, this is a matter of integrity. I must also add that the follow-up treatment Ms. Foreman received from this board and this leadership was vile. She was ordered off of district property, escorted out by security like a criminal. And told she could not return to the premises to teach for her final two weeks. She could not even return to let her students say goodbye to their beloved teacher. This was a reaction to simply speaking up that I never thought I would see in the town of Hastings on Hudson. In sum, please table your votes on the minute until they reflect who of you wanted to share the resignation letter written by Ms. Foreman. And who wanted to share only Ms. Spirelli's neutral letter. Thank you.
Thank you. We don't appear to have any more public comment.
Thank you, Melissa. I want to share that the board is aware that there continue to be allegations and beliefs. That the district has banned reading materials from our curriculum. And we would like to remind the public that this is untrue. The district explained the matter thoroughly in its letters dated February 24th by Dr. Henning Piedmont. And February 26th by Ms. Simansky, Ms. Spirelli and the fifth grade team. The board is also aware that there is a sentiment that public comment in our meetings has been censored. And this is also untrue. The board has a policy of not permitting the discussion of personnel matters. Nor allowing comments to be directed at individuals on the board or administration. Personnel matters relating to district employees are addressed through communication with supervisors and union representation. Or the employee individually. If a personnel matter warrants board review, it is not through discussion at a public board meeting. But rather through a grievance process determined by agreements with the collective bargaining units or an executive session.
Lauren, I'd like to jump in there. When we refer to the board, that is not a unanimous statement. I would not agree with that statement that was just read. I don't know if you want to rephrase it as the majority of the board. But I am not looking to make a statement that includes the board, which I have not seen or agreed to. I believe the word banned is a nuanced word. And I definitely don't like to be a part of an entity that continues to use the word board that I'm on. When I don't agree to those statements.
I note that you don't agree with the statement I just made, Jeremy. Thank you. And this evening we have a budget presentation and Maureen, you've got the floor.
Sure. So I think Valerie is going to actually kick us off for the first few slides. And then as we mentioned, I think, you know, the time tonight is really to allow our budget managers. To be able to present their, their budgets and and there's and there are either if they have a request or an increase. And then really just to allow for a conversation with the board and and some Q and A. So Valerie will, will head us off tonight and Melissa, would you like Melissa to start sharing her screen now, Valerie?
Thank you. Yes.
Would you like me to do Melissa or would you like to do it? Sorry.
I, I could pull it up. It's up to you.
I could pull it up. You know what? It's easier because this way I can move it along. Thank you. I'll, I'll pull it up. So Valerie, you can start. I'm sorry.
Okay. So the first couple of slides is just a reminder with regards to. You know, what's the basis of our budget and the budget lives in a set of, you know, beliefs or philosophy around. You know, how it's supposed to support the needs of of our students and educating all of them. And ensuring that our school system is organized to do so successfully. This collection of values, as I said, are not, you know, slide number two.
Oh, sorry.
The set of values that we, we try to maintain has to do with also making sure that our system is maintained through their ability to attract. You know, employees who bring assets to the school district to, to complement those that currently exist. It's a way for us to make sure that prospective homeowners of view Hastings as, you know, a very competitive community to live in. We focus on our schools in terms of making sure that the, the academic and athletic offerings are highly competitive. There's a value placed on the notion that high quality academics and athletic choices are available to our children. Opportunities to engage and ongoing learning for professionals who are educating students with different learning needs. As well as to be innovative and creative and to prepare our children to succeed in a world that, you know, is changing dramatically. And in ways in which we don't currently fully understand, but we do understand that, you know, from some of the literature that we've read. A focus only on content, you know, does not prepare children adequately for that world, that global society, that rapidly changing global society. But helping young people to actually use their content to, to solve problems is really a critical pathway for us to, to, to explore. In terms of some of the challenges that continue to, that we continue to face and that every school district continues to face that that's in Westchester County. Is that there is this, I guess, positive stereotype that Westchester as a whole is wealthy and then do and is a wealthy district. It has sufficient resources to ensure that it maintains the, all of the, the, the programs and the level of education. That's really important and valued by the community. There, one of those challenges also, you know, comes up, you know, in every school district. Every year is this notion of not exceeding the tax cap, you know, a tax cap that was never 2%. But a tax cap that does in fact ensure that taxpayers are not seeing, you know, outrageous increases every year. But that we also know that the tax cap doesn't cover all of our expenses that are necessary for maintaining our school system. In certain communities, certainly in Hastings, there's a limited amount of revenue and that revenue meaning opportunities for other businesses. Or that that generate taxes that come to the school district, you know, that, that isn't something that, you know, is can, that that's produced often. And yet, you know, that's, you know, that continues to be one of our challenges. The COVID pandemic's cost and the financial impact is something that we talked about in last year's budget. We talked about, you know, we, we talked about what we knew about at the time. We had no idea that, you know, we would be talking about, you know, high six figures. In terms of, of the amount of funds that we've had to expend, you know, in order for us to, to open as safely as we could possibly open in a hybrid model. In, in late September. Unfunded mandates are, you know, and that's happens to be one of them in terms of the COVID expenses. Just our district received very, very little funding that we, and that funding was associated with our consolidated Title I. Application, which is based upon the numbers of, of families that qualify for our free reduced lunch program. And it's, it's tied to the, the census data that, that is used to determine, you know, what, you know, so where are the levels of, of, of. Low wealth reside in the, in the community. So that's continues to be an area that, that districts have to prepare for when developing and organizing their budget. Increased accountability and other, you know, New York State mandated reporting increases every year. There are multiple reports that ask for lots of different information that Albany needs to make decisions. And that does require a lot of effort on the part of mostly members in Maureen Carraballo's office. Our CIO Nick Macri spends a lot of time in this arena. Certain, next slide, Maureen. Certain budget realities are also always looming that we have to factor in. There's always additional mandates with no financial relief. So today we did understand and learn that the American Rescue Plan, which is the stimulus plan of that of $1.9 trillion. Means that New York State is expected to receive 12.5 billion of that in general funding. That's just plug the massive budget deficit and K-12 schools will receive about $9 billion. The law requires, which is, you know, one of those sort of constraints, that 20% of the K-12 funding be used for learning loss. We don't know exactly what that means, but, you know, having additional parameters around the use of the funds, you know, doesn't necessarily mean that school districts can use it. Exactly the way they need to use it. State aid funding is always, you know, something that, that, you know, districts have to worry about. And certainly, you know, all districts, especially those in communities where the formula that New York State uses to make these allocations is, you know, based upon older census data. Is also based not, that hasn't factored in new costs associated with educating children who, who can, who are eligible to stay in school until the age of 21. And, and, and that, you know, continues to be one of those issues that, that really does continue to put pressure on our, on the development of any school budget. Uncertainty around any local revenue sources, you know, taxes were impacted by the, the pandemic as well as, you know, any, you know, interest income. That we were expecting as well as any facilities usage funds that we were expecting. And we know that many of the members of the, you know, of the community that could traditionally used our buildings. That in turn generated funds or resources for revenue for the school district were greatly impacted by the pandemic. So that, so we suffered a loss there as well. Changes in enrollment beyond the trend data is, you know, always something we think about. We track the, the attendance of, you know, incoming kindergartners and as well as any families who are moving in throughout the school district. It does impact, impact our class sizes and obviously, you know, there's a very, a value placed on making sure we maintain. The student teacher ratio and class sizes. Special education services are also services that are dependent upon the needs of students. And we have to make sure that we provide resources to serve the needs of all of our students. We want to also attract students from. We want to also attract students from other school districts to come and take advantage of our programs, and so that new enrollment is a really critical factor with regards to revenue. And we also want to create the least restrictive learning environment, which is an optimal environment for all of our students with IEPs, you know, to be able to thrive and to learn, and to have access to what their grade-level peers have access to. And in order to make sure that we continue to attract tuition-paying students in school districts, we do have to invest in our school district, and we have to invest in the professional learning for all of our professionals who do have to learn different skills to work effectively with some of our learners. And other major factors that impact our expenses are, you know, are the traditional ones, regardless of whether we had a tax cap or not a tax cap, regardless of which district a school is in, our schools are in. Contractual obligations are always a priority in terms of what is already in a contract that we are obligated to pay. We don't have, you know, any choices to reneg on those obligations. Any programs that come with required professional learning to maintain our ability to offer those courses, those are college-level courses like Advanced Placement. We have to make sure that we provide in the schedule for those courses, and if we are interested in having new courses, new college-level courses, whether it's Project Lead the Way, or other kinds of courses from universities or colleges, we have to make sure that we provide that professional learning that makes those courses successful. Pension costs are always a moving target, you know, those are set by New York State. We don't have, you know, a lot of choice, other than to make sure that we have a pension reserve, which for TRS, ERIS already had one, that already has one that exists, but that still is a number that changes over time, and we don't, you know, often don't have advanced notice with regards to what that could be. Health insurance increases are always, you know, expected every year, even though we are a part of a health consortium, and a consortium helps to manage the different costs for the participants in that consortium, and that, that those costs are passed on to school districts, and we do have to pay those increases. State and federal mandates, again, are, you know, always a requirement, whether it means that we have to update software, or add additional devices, or provide additional training, or, you know, whatever it happens to be, we have to make sure that we meet those particular state and federal mandates. Enrollment in class size is always a factor. Again, you know, we want to maintain a certain class size, and at the same time, we want to make sure that, you know, families are moving into Hastings, so we have to always keep our eye on that and make sure that we stay ahead of that to the extent possible, and, you know, not allow, you know, any changes to occur that impact the quality of education in Hastings. And finally, capital projects and debt, and so any capital projects from the past, you know, that we haven't paid off yet, we still have to make sure that we maintain those payments, and that's a part of a budget that's built in. And obviously, we want to make sure that we, you know, where necessary, there is a capital reserve that helps us to stay ahead of the natural kinds of, you know, costs associated with maintaining the facilities and properties of the school district, because they are enormously valuable, but they also are, you know, we also want to make sure that we pay attention to making sure the buildings are safe and our grounds are safe for our students and faculty and staff.
So, you can hear me right, okay. So now I'm going to take us through just very quickly some slides we've shared in our first presentation, our budget overview. Again, just to remind the board and to the public of what our current budget proposal is as of today. We are projecting a budget for '21-'22 of $53,500,000, and tonight, we'll start to unpack some of what is included in that with our budget managers. And as you know, we are required by law to present a budget that's balanced, and you can see on our revenue side of the overview how we believe that'll be accomplished this year. We are anticipating, as Valerie had mentioned earlier, that with the federal stimulus money, although there will be some requirements around how some of that money may be used, we are projecting to see our state aid for '21-'22 at $5.2 million, and we're also anticipating some of our miscellaneous receipts, particularly the sales tax revenue, we've been seeing that, thankfully, going up, although not back to previous levels, but again, we feel comfortable projecting some increases in our miscellaneous receipts. We are recommending an appropriated fund balance transfer, and again, appropriated fund balance, for those who may not be familiar with the term, really speaks to the amount of monies available from either this year's spending plan that comes to us either with some excess revenues we've received, or some expenditure savings that can then be used to offset the following year's budget. And again, that, we are recommending a slight increase over our current allocation of those funds. Valerie had alluded to earlier in discussing the pension costs, that districts do, as we do, have some reserve funding that we do set aside for increases, and in both the employee retirement contribution, as well as the teacher retirement, and we are recommending to help offset some of those increases this year, an allocation of $650,000, which is, as you can see on the slide, is an increase to what we appropriated this year. The rate is going up, and this is a time in which it would be appropriate to apply some additional funding there. We are also releasing $100,000 from our Tax Cert fund, and this is both to help balance the budget, and also as some of our tax sorcery claims are paid off, and we find monies that were allocated for those to now be in excess, we do release that back to general fund. And that leaves us with a property tax levy of $44,500,000, which is $1.5 million increase to our levy. It makes, it does, it is tax cap compliant, and currently, we are projecting an estimated tax rate increase at 1.4-5%. Again, just really briefly, I went through all of these, this gives us a little bit, provides a little bit more detail in some of those revenue categories. It is a little bit further of a breakdown of those miscellaneous categories, and you can see how, you know, some of those line items, I think I had mentioned, the sales tax in particular, you're seeing that we are projecting a budget increase there, and most of the other categories are remaining pretty much flat, other than the fund balance or reserves that I spoke about, and these, again, with the restoration of that state aid number, we are projecting that $800,000 increase, which is helping us balance our budget for next year. This, again, we do present this each time, and again, this just demonstrates the formula that we are, that we need to use to determine what our tax cap for our individual district is each year, and again, some of it is unique to the district, which is the second line of, which is the growth factor. That factor is determined by the Office of Real Property Services of New York, and it is tied to assessment growth in the village, and although the last previous few years have, the number's been much higher, this year's relatively flat, and again, that's just part of the formula. But really, just what does that mean at the bottom line? Is that, under the tax cap formula, the district, in order to stay tax cap compliant, could not exceed an increase of our tax levy of $698,000. And as I show, spoke about on an earlier slide, our current budget that we are presenting is in fact tax cap compliant. Again, just, this is a slide I've shared at an earlier budget presentation that Valerie and I had done. This really just gives us some high-level, you know, reasons, you know, as I presented, the budget is right now projected to grow at about $1.8 million year-over-year, and this is just to kind of give you a sense of what is, you know, what are the categories that are increasing our expenses year-over-year? And as we provide, again, tonight and in future board presentations, we're really going to drill down and show you where those increases are, but just to give you a general sense, we have salary increases, Valerie had mentioned. You know, we do have, you know, close to 300 staff members with all faculty, staff, and substitutes each year, many of which work under collective bargaining agreements, and, you know, the, there's a cost of our budget that is to address our salary increases that we're projecting for next year. We do have some increases in our costs for students with disabilities, whether they have placements outside of the district, some increases in legal expenses, equipment. Valerie said, you know, like any business, we have technology, infrastructure needs, and obviously, those do have an end of shelf life, so that that's always a part of our budget planning. There are some BOCs increases in cost of services. We, we've, we'll talk about that, not necessarily in depth tonight, but at other meetings, we participate with BOCs. It is helpful to the district, because although there is a cost of, an increase in the cost of services, we do receive a good bit amount of our state aid back through reimbursements by participating with them for technology and other items they provide to districts. As I had mentioned earlier, there is an increase in both our pension obligations for employees in both the teacher retirement system, as well as the employee retirement system, and that's factored into this budget increase. We also, our health insurance consortium, they tell us the rate, and they've given us the rate of increase for next year, and that's going to be 3.9% over the current rate of our health insurance cost. And, you know, just to remind, it's not only for current employees, it's also a good amount of our retirees that we do also pay a health insurance cost for, you know, prior to them being Medicare-eligible. Also, increases to utilities, I think we all have seen large increases lately in ConEd, and also an increase in some of our debt service. So that, right there, out of 1.8 million, that is about 1.3 million before we add anything additional to our budget. So, again, just to remind, and our budget managers will, you know, be able to give you a lot more detail this evening on these. Right now, we're also in our budget plan, we are proposing $585,000 worth of new budget proposals, and as you can see on the screen, it's a restoration of a science position. Hillside will be speaking about their 1.2%, excuse me, 1.2 FTE of increase. At the next meeting, Melissa Samansky and Valerie, Dr. Henning P. Mount, will discuss the diversity coordinator position a little bit further, and Ms. Sullivan tonight will discuss the addition of the four aides. So with that, I will hand it over to Amy to walk you through her Hillside budget.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us this evening to go over our budget. So I'm going to be speaking on behalf of Hillside, and the first slide, slide 13, thank you. Our first slide is focused on our enrollment. So if you have a look in the first column, you see the projected enrollment, the current enrollment, and then what is projected. And you can see that over five years, we are anticipating an increase of 150 students, which is a very significant increase, and we want to make sure that, you know, we're thinking ahead, which is why the construction project is happening. And also, on the bottom, you see that 2022, the kindergarten live birth projection is approximately 40 students higher than the figure shown. So we are growing, and that's because we're a wonderful community. All right, next slide, please. So what you see here on the left side is our current enrollment, and then on the right side is our projection for next year. So on the left-hand side, you see that we have a total of 28 sections, and then rolling over to next year, an increase in one section of kindergarten, and that is based on our projection, so that would be an increase of one section. Next slide, please.
Yeah, and I just, Amy, just, I would just highlight that our numbers this year, you know, as we look at projections, because of some families that either decided to either homeschool or alternate private, I mean, just the base year is much lower than it would traditionally have been.
It's also the reason that you see the discrepancy, so to a rate, right? If you look, for example, at kindergarten, you see currently we have 94, and then for next year, we're projecting 107 first graders, and that's because we took into account the students that may have decided to homeschool this year, or do a pod, or another alternative. So thank you, Maureen, that was a good point.
No problem, thank you.
Okay, next slide, thank you. So on this slide, you'll see that, for the most part, we haven't had any budget-to-budget changes. However, you will note that the textbook budget increased significantly, and the reason for that is we decided to have a handwriting initiative. We recognize the fact that our students' letter formation was not consistent, and that's because every grade level was doing something different. So together with the teachers at Hillside, we collaborated on which program made the most sense, and the program Handwriting Without Tears was selected. It's also a program that was cleared as being one of the best programs by our OTs, and we're excited to bring that program on. So that is the reason that you see the textbook increase, to be able to get materials for all grades K through 4. Next slide, please. This is simply the two recommendations that we have from Hillside. So as we shared, the increase of one kindergarten section, and then also an increase of a .2 FTE as the math interventionist. Currently, we have a .8 position, and the way the .8 position works is that it's a four-day-a-week position, but our math interventionist currently comes five days a week and leaves a period early. We recognize that there's a great need to be able to increase the math support, and the next three slides will help to be able to explain why. Next slide, thank you. So this is currently the information that you can see in regard to our math specialist. So our math interventionist is working with our Tier 2 and our Tier 3 students, and these are the numbers with whom she's working. What I want you to recognize is that we cannot have any kindergartners supported, because we just don't have enough time. And the other piece is that you'll notice that there are, most of our children that are receiving support in math are all the way across the grades. You don't see that they are in one grade specifically, they really span all across the grades. You'll also note that eight students were exited from math intervention, which we are, you know, very excited about, but that will be a number that we pay attention to as we continue on. So our math interventionist currently has serviced 20, she's serviced 35 children, eight of whom have exited, and as a result, she is currently servicing 27 children. If you go onto the next slide, please, you'll see on our next slide that this is our reading interventionist, and I wanted to show you a comparison, just to be able to help the board understand the reason for this recommendation. So currently at Hillside, we have 2.0 in regard to our FTEs for reading intervention. You'll see in the Tier 2 and Tier 3 columns that we are very, very heavy in our support in the early years. So what this means is we do a lot of early intervention in grades K1 and 2, and then because of that, you'll notice grades 3 and 4 are very, very limited with intervention. And that's because we've closed the gap early. What we know about intervention is that the earlier you can catch it, the smaller the gap is. And then as it progresses over time, the gap gets larger, just because the content gets greater, and the depth gets deeper. So it is our goal to be able to intervene early for our students, so that we can close that gap early on and catch them up. You'll also notice that our interventionist serviced 66 students in total, 25 of which exited, and this number is significant, because what it shows us is it's one and a half times the number of students exiting reading as compared to math. Okay, next slide, please. So here are some pieces that we wanted to just bring to your attention, some findings, if you will. The first is, the reason for this recommendation, as I shared before, is that it would allow us for more early intervention. We really would like to be able to intervene, not only with our grades 1 and 2 kids, but also with our kindergartners, and although it's not a lot more time, it certainly is more time, and that would give us the ability to have more students that are serviced. In addition, what we recognize right now, because of the limited time and schedule, our math interventionist had to be very creative with the way that she was servicing kids, so that she was able to service as many kids as she possibly could. But in order to do that, she was not able to stick to the model of what Tier 2 and Tier 3 looked like exactly. So currently, our reading specialists see our Tier 2 kids three times a week, and they see our Tier 3 kids four times a week. Our math interventionist had to adjust that to be able to fit enough children into her schedule. In addition, our reading interventionists keep the group sizes based on the state recommendation. So the state recommends three to five students in a group for Tier 2, and one to two students in a group for Tier 3. And in reading, those numbers have been very, very closely held. However, in math, the However, in math, the tier three group has gone up to three students. And although it doesn't sound like a lot of students, when a student is in tier three, we really want to give them very specific focused intervention. So we strongly believe that with more intervention in math, this would also increase our rate of being able to exit students from MTSS in math. And then lastly, the research on the COVID slide shows us that there's greater loss in math than there is in reading. So there's no better time to be able to increase this position. Right now, we know that our students will be coming in next year, and there likely will be a greater loss in math. So we'd like to be able to make this recommendation to be able to better support our students. Thank you.
So I guess we'll hold the questions to the end, Valerie, is that the way we'll go through the whole presentation?
Yeah, let's do that. Thank you.
Very good. Okay, Jennifer, you're you're next.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for that, Maureen. So we have here our school enrollment number projections for a Farragut Middle School. And similar to the elementary school, we are expecting to increase over the next few years. Our peak will be in 2024 with 67 more students than we have today. But if you notice that from 24 to 25, it drops back down. And in 2025, it's actually only 10% higher than we are today. So it gives you a little concept of the peak and the lulls there for these next few years. And on this slide, excuse me, on this slide here, we have our details of our class sections. Our enrollment went up roughly 28 students, grades five through eight, which in turn only affects class sizes roughly between one to two students. So the data is showing our class sizes are about 24 or less. The number of sections for seventh grade went up, and the number of sections for eighth grade went down. So we maintained an even FTEs. And because our teachers certified seven through 12 were able to make those shifts pretty seamlessly for that flux. And on this slide, we're talking about our supervision and instructional lines combined. So these new allocations that are projected for the 2122 school year are based and are within the people allocation amounts that is driven up by our increase in student enrollments. The the base is actually artificially lower because of last year's cuts. So my goal this year was to restore the money that was previously decreased. So it may look like a larger increase for this, but it's really more about a restoration. You can notice that money was restored to the theater line as well as contractual services for conference. In reference to the third line for textbooks, the Farragut Middle School Math Department began looking at new curriculum resources a few years ago. And the pilot of those resources was delayed due to COVID. But in conjunction with the District Mathematics Committee, the the FMS team is in the process of working on visiting with other schools who use certain math curriculum resources. And that money is put there to support that those shifts. So those additional funds for textbooks that you see in that line three will partially go towards the new curriculum resources for math.
So, yes, we'll hold the questions to the end, but we'll we'll have Lou now present his high school slides.
Good evening, everyone. Let me say, in my 16 years here at Hastings, next year's enrollment is probably the highest enrollment I've ever seen at Hastings High School. When I started back in 2005, our enrollment was in the mid 400s, a little bit above that. If you look, our current enrollment is 527. Next year, we're projected to be 541. And then if you extrapolate it out, we kind of level off around 530 students, give or take a few students. So next year, we anticipate our highest enrollment moving forward. This is, this slide is a little misleading, and I do want to qualify, at the high school level, it's very difficult to parse out sections by grade. And this is primarily your English and your social studies classes. This almost works for, especially in ninth and 10th grade. This is a pretty good estimate of our section enrollment based on the total enrollment per grade and our average class size. You could, you notice that most, if not all, of the grades are averaging out about six sections. The reason why I say it's a little difficult at the high school to do that is because of the multiple levels of courses once a student gets past 10th grade. And some students continue in certain subjects. Some students go out into electives. So to do a hard number on sections is a little difficult. But the average is about six sections if we use English and social studies as our barometer in each of the grades. And that's staying consistent between this year and next year. These are our budget lines that are for the most part in our high school budget. If you notice our contract services, your all our conferences, subscriptions, memberships, our graduation line, sort of our day to day kind of functions, that budget line is staying flat. Our supply lines for all of the departments and the entire high school main office is also remaining flat. There's a slight uptick in our textbook line, and that's to cover some AP Calculus books that are sort of end of life. Dr. Stevens is working with Ms. Demansky on, I believe they've selected a textbook. It's a new edition of the textbook that we already use. And that's in that budget line, that's the $4,100 uptick. And then, again, similar to what Ms. Sporelli talked about, is we're putting a little bit more money into our theatrical line to cover the expenses, and that's $3,000. The biggest budget item for us, again, is a little deceiving, but I'll explain it. It shows a restoration of a 1.0 FTE science teacher at the high school. That is basically the middle school being able to hire back their earth science teacher, and we taking back our high school physics teacher. So the the actual posting will be a Farragut Middle School Earth Science teacher. And what that'll do is give us the ability, if if needed, to restore our AP Physics E and M course. The those board members who were on the board last year know that we had an AP Physics E and M course that had an enrollment of five. And and that was a decision to fold that course. I'm happy to report that we were able to run that course as an independent study. And all of those students are able to take the AP Physics E and M course this year. We're also, as Dr. Valerie Henning Piedmont mentioned, and we talked a little bit about last year, we are trying to get the Project Lead the Way course in engineering up and running for next year. And we'll use those FTEs to do that as well. And then and then bring back some of the electives, because I know the community was concerned about us not being able to offer enough electives in our science program due to the reduction of our science teacher last year. Again, I couldn't tell you exactly which electives we're going to be running or reinstating. That's all driven by our course request process, which just started a couple of weeks ago. So our enrollment will will prioritize what courses we need to run based on enrollment projections.
Thank you, Lou.
Thank you.
I'm just going to briefly just, these are items that kind of fall under the title here, instructional expenses. And, you know, are going to be presented tonight because they do go directly with supporting the building. So the ones, one I will walk us through, and then either Valerie or Melissa can hop in. These are items that we do show every year. And again, this goes, although they're not departmentalized, these are items that do go back directly to supporting instruction. And, you know, as you can see here, we have the contract services, arts, arts and education, that that is not going up. Again, a big thing we talk about each year, you know, the copiers in the district, and we do have a centralized copy more or less budget, but but that obviously is used to support each individual building. So we are seeing a slight increase there, and that just has to do with some of the leases, we our lease cost for this upcoming year, not necessarily an increase in actual machines. And again, that is something we are continuing to look at to see if there's ways to reduce that. But currently, we're just rolling over our leases for purposes of this budget. The district mailing, again, is we're seeing a, we're mailing out less, a slight decrease. That's the lease of different postage equipment, that's actually the cost of that. School security, just an increase in the contractual cost and some additional hours we that may be needed. District supplies, again, this is, it does include copy paper, but it also includes other type of expenses. And there's some examples there of those things. And again, we are projecting a decrease of about 15,000 there. Again, software and support for things that directly support our staff. And again, we do always have a couple of dollars there for residency investigation. So that's, again, just related to if there's an issue at the building that that's addressed. And we do anticipate a decrease there. So overall, we're not increasing as a as a total area that those are going to remain flat. I don't know, Valerie, if you just want to kind of hop in on this one for, on the diversity corner?
Sure. Work of the diversity coordinator has been, you know, sort of divided across a number of responsibilities. There's a teaching responsibility in the courageous conversations course and program as well as responsibilities related to providing services to English's and new language learners. What's been challenging is being able to, you know, be more involved or have our dress, our inclusion and diversity coordinator more involved in programming, you know, working to support the implementation of the culturally responsive sustaining education framework and actually providing more in-service supports that are that are developed by, you know, by Ms. Denise Mateo Toledo. And it's just, at this point in time, she doesn't have sufficient time to be able to do any of that if she still also is teaching and has teaching responsibilities. So our proposal, in order for us to allow her to do that very important work, and now is more important than any time with, you know, what's going on in our country and that we need someone, you know, we need her time really dedicated to supporting the needs of, you know, of just making sure that we're focusing on the needs of all of our learners and working to support the teaching of sensitive, you know, content and ways in which our students are interacting with that content and supporting their colleagues. So that's, that would be an important change that we're recommending that would allow Ms. Janice Mateo Toledo to do more of an inclusion and diversity work more fully in the coming school year.
And these are items that although, you know, are directly related to the building and we are not, this is our E and L budget, and based upon the numbers, we feel our, I feel, but Denise felt that the staffing was appropriate, and we're recommending to keep that area flat. But again, that's something that goes across all the buildings. And and as as we've done in previous slides, we just provide different enrollment numbers. So you can have, see why we're making the recommendation, either to increase, decrease, or to stay, stay flat. Um, I, again, this is something, I don't know if Lou or Valerie want to jump in, or Lou, this is again to school counseling and social work services.
Sorry, I'm jumping in, I'm jumping in.
Thanks, Lou.
Okay, no, no worries. I mean, we're pretty much staying flat as far as school counseling is concerned, you know, Naviance is our software that we use to track for college, college admittance and uploading of applications and transcripts and so forth. And all of our professional subscriptions, those numbers haven't changed, the costs have not changed. And all of the other lines, the homebound instruction, just so those of you who don't know what that is, is for students who are home for either medical reasons or other reasons that we have to provide home tutoring for. And that comes out of that homebound instruction line. And then we do have some some software services that come out of BOSI's. Maureen, the OCHED component is not part of this, correct?
It is not, no, we'll present that.
Okay.
Yep, thanks, Lou.
You're welcome.
And again, this is just health services. And these are items that are just, again, directly related to the building level and students, students across the board. So this is, again, we're going to present all the salary information on all these different departments at our next meeting, but these are just kind of contractual services. You can see here, we do also pay other districts for students, our our students who may be attending districts in other locations. So this is a legal requirement, and we, but we are anticipating a slight or $20,000 decrease there. So that's good. Our medical director with Hastings Pediatrics, and that's the cost of that contract. And again, they support all across all schools. And again, some nurses, which again, is a contractual cost, not a salary cost, and that's why it's located here. And that is, again, when our nurses are unable to be here, we are required, again, to have an RN in the building so that there's some money set aside for for providing for that and for school trips if we are able to take them in the future and supplies for those offices. And we're just anticipating, again, a slight increase in need there. And now Laura Sullivan will present the special education component of the budget.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you. I just want to let everyone know that my other login where you see Laura Sullivan is actually Tessa Stewart. So he's here with, he's here with me tonight, he's just using my name. So, thank you. So again, just walking through each of the lines, equipment is, we're staying flat, and that is usually used for buying large pieces of equipment for individual student needs. The next line, that is our contract services, therapeutic service providers, our ABA services, private, private schools, and independent evaluations. This is a, an important one because there isn't a significant increase in this one. And I just want everyone to know that we, as a result of COVID, we have and actually not just a result of COVID, but Hudson Lab is a private school in our district. So we are considered the district of location. Our responsibilities, our legal responsibilities are that we service any children with special needs in that, in that private school, regardless if they are our students or if they are from other districts. So this year, Hudson Lab has expanded. My sense is that perhaps it did start to expand just in its normal growth. But I think some families sent their students to Hudson Lab as a result of COVID. And this is not just our students, again, these are students from other districts all over the county. And we are responsible for providing their their related services. So there's an increase in that. And then in this line is also an increase in the our extended school year services that we provide children as well as some additional services that we provide outside of the school day. And this is, we do this every year, but we're also thinking that there is going to be a slight increase due to an anticipation of some slide from COVID. The increase in terms of supplies is a lot of our sensory tools that we use with our students. This year had to be just, you know, typically, we pre-COVID times, they were all shared. This year, due to safety reasons, they were actually assigned to individual students. So there's going to be a significant amount of replacement in terms of our sensory tools that we use for occupational therapy, physical therapy, and just within the classroom to support our students with needs.
The last two sections of this slide, you'll see two notes of decrease. The first is due to our students that are in, whether they're in BOSI's or alternative settings. They are graduating, and that will cause a decrease for the upcoming school year as well as textbooks, which are now, within math, are now being absorbed through the district. So we have psychological services where we will see an increase, and this is due primarily to us updating our testing tools. A lot of the testing tools, this is in collaboration with our psychologists, our teachers, psychologists who do psychological evaluations, a large amount of our teachers who do the educational evaluations have conferred with us and said that, you know, they feel the tools that we, the current measures we have should be updated. So we have to purchase new measures just to make sure we have accurate information when we're classifying students or just doing reevaluation meetings in the upcoming school years.
In addition to this, we have the Wyatt Four that has been up In addition to this, we have the Wyatt four that has been updated. So we are legally bound to to update it. The self preschool, which is a speech and language assessment that has been updated. And we we started using the FAR. It's the Pfeiffer Assessment for Reading, which we have found to be provide much more in-depth diagnostics in the area of FAR. So we are looking now into purchasing the FAM and the FAR, which is a Pfeiffer Assessment of Math and the Pfeiffer Assessment of Writing. We are anticipating that the RAML and the the ways, which are both psychological evaluations, they started to update theirs. So they were moving on to their next update with COVID. They had to stop because they're they could not their norms, the norm fields, they could not test due to the COVID situation. We do anticipate that when things go back to somewhat of a norm normalcy and they are allowed to create those norms, that we will have to update our RAML and our waste testing as well in the future. Our special education enrollment appears to, you know, these are our numbers, including our parentally placed and out of district placements. And we do special education does not oversee the five oh four plans. They are general education plans, but they do somewhat collaborate with our office. So these are just telling you the numbers of students currently that we have in each grade. This slide is gonna is as a recommendation of increase of four FTEs of teacher aid positions. This is difficult to explain because of confidentiality reasons, so I can't give too much details. But what I can tell you is that these these positions are anticipated. Again, there we're just starting annual review season and we have to, we don't end until June 30th. So these are projections and they are based on situations such as incoming CPSC as well as students that are returning to district for reasons such as they're coming back to district where they were out of district or they're returning from parental placements or they're returning from homeschooling. So it's a mixture of those. Again, they're projections because we are just beginning our our annual review season. There is always so many unknowns in terms of special education. Again, as I said, the interview annual review season has just started. We try to have a good projection in terms of at least our out of district projections, but we can never project who's going to move into the district.
Right. In addition, we have, you know, uncertainties as far as, you know, if we would have tuition students come in, which could offset certain costs as well as students who move out. You know, I think, you know, COVID being what it was this year, there were a lot of families who chose private placement for various reasons, whether it was prior to our announcement of a five-day all-in or just their level of comfort. So we could anticipate those families coming back or they're staying in the current placement so they feel comfortable returning back to the district.
That's also for homeschooling as well. We do have some students that are homeschooled for the same reasons. The the next one is talking about how many students currently attending school in district? What will we potentially recommend an out of district placement? Again, those are committee decisions. We can make projections, but those decisions are purely made at the table with all of the the members and how many students will be assigned a one-to-one aid or need additional services. Again, we try our best to project, but sometimes there's students that move into the district that have higher needs than than we anticipated. At this point, the current budget that we're putting up only allows for one additional out of district placement. Any additional expenses will result in a need for need for mid-year cuts. So we do try to project to hold a place as if there is a sudden need for someone to a child to go out of district or if there's a new student that enters the district that we do not have a placement for. We try to hold one spot. Any additional needs, we would have to, we would have to look at making cuts.
So so again, as Laura mentioned, there's there's unknowns and as part of where we are in the budget process, you know, as we try to project, Laura stated the unknowns with special ed and these are other, you know, factors that are always on our mind as we develop a budget. Our final state allocation, because although we thankfully, we know that that there is some help on the way, you know, we're still not a hundred percent clear. And I know the board later this evening is going to discuss some advocacy efforts around state aid funding that that are underway. But again, that is always a bit of an unknown, the the final number number will receive. Actual our final enrollment of incoming kindergarteners as well as across the case six sections. I would say that I I believe it's a little bit even more unknown this year because I I think there there were parents either that delayed sending their children into kindergarten on this this past year or, you know, maybe some some less. We typically experience more movement into the district over the summer. I think it was a little bit less this year. So again, it'll be interesting to see what our our upcoming enrollment will look like. Again, we spoke a little bit about our E and L students and again, one or two additional students. And we've seen this can impact can depending on the level they're at, there there may or could be a need to increase staffing beyond our current levels. Laura went over the special ed. Again, additional bus expenses for both our in district students, if we're if we see an uptick or more more a need to add additional buses next for in district, they get out of district as well. So depending on where some students are placed, we may, we may need to run an additional bus run. Unexpected leave replacements, we are people have the organization and when we are are anyone in any position, if they need to be out or an illness, we we may have additional be unexpected leave replacements that we would have to pay for. And again, I think Tess was spoke about this. We do have some of our revenues are coming in from both our our programs that we run in the district for specialized students as well as parents who place their children here. And again, that if if there was a change in status in either the other districts placing children here, that that would impact our projected revenues. Again, these are just important dates to remember. This evening, we presented some of our budget managers. We're here to present their budgets and to allow for questions. We are going to have another opportunity on March 22nd. More more people will be joining us and presenting their budgets. And again, we'll get into greater details at that time. We'll be providing, at that point, we'll be providing a much more in-depth line-by-line item. And we'll we'll present that that evening. We're trying to break it down into manageable chunks so we can have some discussion. We will have another budget review on April 7. And again, the April 20th is the required budget adoption by the board. Then the again, these are subscribe dates, May 4th is a budget hearing and then the May 18th budget vote. And we are looking to provide other opportunities to with our public to to present and speak about our budget. So thank you. And I guess now we can open it up for questions if 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 any of the board, the trustees have any.
Yes, thank you so much, Maureen and Laura Sullivan and Tessa Stewart and each of the leadership teams at Hillside, Farragut and the high school. If any trustees now have any questions or comments about the budget that they presented, it would be time to do that.
I just wanted to say I thought that was incredibly clear and I'm so pleased that the science position was able to be restored. Thank you.
Yeah, Lauren, Tess, I just had a question. You know, we see the cost for out of district placements. What what is the on the other side? What is the revenue for for people we bring into the district for different programs that we have?
I think Maureen could probably answer the the number of the revenue. What I can say not discuss, I mean, not about the number, but what I can say and Tessa jump in is that the projection is that we would remain the same with the student that we currently have.
But we had, we had two additional students starting in September. However, one family moved to California and then another family also moved for COVID reasons. So we were at a higher state, but as of right now, you know, I I predict it to remain static to where it is. But we have, I would say I've been here four years. So in the past three years, we've had steady increases. However, just another caveat to think about, there are neighboring districts are building their own programs. So I I think, you know, the the trend in special education is about inclusive practices. So if I'm going to forecast, I don't and hopefully I'm wrong, but you know, I don't foresee, I see a lot of districts keeping their students sort of like what we're trying to do to build inclusive programs. So it it might be, you know, a little harder to have more tuition students, but you never know, because some of these programs or some schools, you know, we get emails late June looking for a program for a student. And but the other end of it, you know, with COVID is very hard to do intakes to see how a student is coming into the building physically because, you know, with social distancing, but you know, knock on wood, it should stay static to where it is. But Maureen, I'm sorry.
I don't know. That's fine. So in terms of dollars, we are projecting, I mean, I think that's an area in which I think Tesla highlighted all the reasons why you it's it's great to have and we we look at, we build that revenue into our budget, but we're always conservative in our projection. So for next year, we're projecting about three hundred thousand dollars of revenue. If in terms of, we've seen that number fluctuate somewhere between on the low two fifty a year, but we have had some years in which we've received six hundred thousand or so in out of district tuition payments to the district. But it is wise in development of a budget with not always knowing a hundred percent what another district may do to project that number at a place where we feel we can meet that number. And then if there are any additional students that do come come to us, that that's additional revenue we we do receive. But it's it's best not to, you know, to be conservative in that projection. So the answer is about four hundred thousand this year. We're projecting three hundred next year.
Is the roughly two point one or two million for a district our size? What are the comparables? You know, is that percentage of of our budget pretty standard for districts our size? You know, that that the two million, is that a pretty standard number as far as tuition goes?
Well, I I think I think it, I mean, I Lauren Tesla, I think it's not necessarily the dollar amount. It's I guess maybe just the percentage of children that may need out of district placements. And I think it's one of those areas that I think will be very difficult to, you know, draw a comparison without knowing all the particulars because I think the dollars don't necessarily, you know, depending on where we're in a consortium. I I would argue that we've actually brought that number down. Tesla, go ahead. I'm sorry.
And you know, another variable is the services, you know, a student might just require an ICT classroom. And that that's one variable. And you might have a student who requires a small class, a one-to-one aid, you know, or a one-to-one teacher assistant, parent training, and you know, the more services you add on, you know, the more it would increase. So, you know, it's as individualized as an IEP, you know, I know.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm really just interested kind of at the, just at the meta level, just just understanding from a percentage perspective. Are we, you know, are we doing, are we kind of in the right spot? You know, we've got the services we 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 need. I mean, it costs money to build out services, right? So at some point, if you try to build out services to decrease the cost of sending people, sending students out, it actually increases the cost because you've got to hold them here. So I'm just trying to figure out, do we feel we have the right balance? Or is there some moves that we feel we we need to make?
I think that's a good question. I think, I mean, there's always room for growth. But, you know, I I think, you know, and Laura, you could jump in. I I think, you know, as we learn more, I I think for certain buildings, we know we have more, we need more information in one building as opposed to other buildings. But I think as we build more, I would say we're close, but it depends building to building, you know.
I think I think moving to a more inclusive environment is going to be more more money upfront. So if you if you look at a another district that is in Westchester County, they created programs in for every one of their individual students. And then they ended up, you know, taking in a lot of tuition students to 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 maintain those programs. They had to put millions of dollars upfront to create those programs in order to maintain because they decided they were not sending out any of their students anymore. But it costs millions and it was a huge commitment on the district in order to do that. So yes, bringing your children back and and keeping your students in district can cost more money upfront. But as time goes on, I think it it tends to level out. We're in a position right now where we're really working towards bringing back students and creating those programs. And I think the program review that was done last year by inclusive schooling was a perfect example of 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 having more children and relooking at our programs and going to a less restrictive environment, moving away from more restrictive and that costs money upfront. But I think in the end, we're saving on not having our children, we're saving two ways. We're saving and not having our children go out financially and we're saving by not having our children go out social emotionally. We our children deserve to be educated in the district and we owe them that to the best that we can. So that does cost money upfront.
And in in the small window of time, you know, we could just look at the middle school because that's where we've put a lot of effort in and, you know, the teachers are doing a great job and the inclusion facilitator is doing a great job. And we did a small sample size of just, you know, measuring the metrics of success for the students. We looked at our students that we had in in our small class environment and we made that transition into a lesser restrictive environment as well as two students who we brought back to district. And Laura, I don't know, do you have the?
So we just did a snapshot in time and looking at seventeen students that we by dissolving our special class and and working with Kristen and the all the hard work that our special education teachers and our general education teachers have put in and all the professional learning that has gone in by dissolving those those special classes. We really did it based on the recommendation of inclusive schooling program review and really what's what what research says is best practice. When we looked at the scores, the students, the average range and in ELA right now across those students is an eighty-three in ELA and an eighty-seven point seven in math. So to me, that is very clear that special classes are not closing the gap, that bringing our children into inclusive environments, providing our teachers with a great deal of of support mindset and and just I I really can't say enough about Kristin Kumar and how well she has worked with 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 Jennifer and Kevin in the team and really how hard the special education teacher and the general education teams in FMS have worked to really bring these scores to life.
Right, especially with a lot of new variables, they've they've done an excellent job, you know, new administration, Kristen, new philosophy. So, you know, everything we talk about, they're executing and we have to tip our hats to them.
And the reason and the evidence that we have is really showing that what inclusive schooling suggested to us to do was was really the right path to take. And and I'm I'm just really proud to say that these students are excelling.
That's great. Yeah, just beyond this budget conversation, but as as we move forward, I think that idea of continuing to create more inclusive environments is critical. And if we have to create the right, you know, spending case to really create the value, you know, we have to really think about that. So we can pause on that for now, but thank you for that explanation. It's helpful.
No problem.
Also a question from Tim there in the chat about the six point five percent increase in general support. Maureen, could you?
Yeah, I mean, next week, we are going to really break that down more granularly because it is, it's a few items that also includes like general insurance, but it's, you know, next week I'm going to be, we didn't provide the general support part of the budget tonight, which includes like buildings and grounds and things such as that, where we can get into kind of like where we see the need to have some additional dollars. So when we present the line by line, that it'll be easier to explain, Jody, because I don't have all those. I I mean, I know I can explain it, but I think it's better when we present the general general support portion of the budget, which is going to occur next week.
I had one or two other things, but I'll wait to see if anyone else has.
I think you can go ahead, Doug.
So again, small thing, but I think it's important, you know, as as we spend on the diversity, you know, for Denise's position moving from point six to one. Um, so again, small thing, but I think it's important, you know, as as we spend on the diversity, you know, for Janice's position moving from point six to one. You know, I think there was a, there was a, I was an op ed piece in the New York Times about, you know, it wasn't just school-based, it was just kind of diversity. Uh, development and training in general, talking about um. You know, how, you know, measuring the efficacy of training itself can be somewhat dubious to really. Kind of shift mindsets and behaviors, um, but really more kind of immersive experiences. With multiple diverse audiences and and in- interacting, engaging. Um, you know, regularly is really what deepens appreciation and understanding for each other. And as we, as we move to invest more, which I think is important and critical in the space. Uh, I want to make sure that we're we're looking at where those investments, so that so it's gonna go obviously with um. Miss Mateo Toledo, but uh, you know, above that, you know, there's gonna be, what is Miss Mateo Toledo doing? And I want to make sure we're really measuring the efficacy of that effort and we're not just. Kind of going through programmatic steps to check boxes, but we're really having impact. So I I we don't, we don't have to go into it here. I just, as that line item increases, rightly so, I think it's gonna just become more into focus as to where we really. Getting our kind of value from experiences in in that bucket. So again, that may be a different topic for a different meeting. I just wanted to say it. Because of the increased uh budget here. And then one other, um, I just wasn't sure, uh, Ms. Pirelli, the the essentially the doubling from eighty-four to one sixty-two. What 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 was that exactly? The the difference between last year and this year?
Let me jump at Jennifer just to give the base here, because I I I actually just. It it's it's especially uh at the middle school level, uh, just to, if you remember Doug, last year, there's a per pupil, it is. How those um, there's a per pupil allocation that we assign to each building based on the enrollment. And that that gives them a certain dollar amount, and then they take that amount to, and they um, they use that. And they can't exceed that dollar amount. Um, and that's for supplies, contractual textbooks. Um, again, most districts, if not all, do do that. There's a certain amount. It's kind of tied to the reimbursement we get for some of those items and. And that's applied. Um, and and when I, when I, uh, when we start our budget process, I will say to each budget manager. Your per pupil allocation is X. How they divide that across their their codes is, um, they have discretion as they're working with their. Teachers, but last year, our base year, because uh when each principal. Had the opportunity or or needed to cut back some things in their individual budgets. At the time, the principal, which was at their discretion, felt that they could for one year reduce um the spending in those codes. Which made like that base year artificially low, because they removed like, like I had given them a base allocation. They said, well, I'm not gonna spend, uh, I'm gonna cut that by seventy-five thousand in order to close my gut budget gap, because I want this other item. But realistically, you know, the the buildings need a certain amount of supplies, materials, contractual expenses. I mean, even just for the science classes, they have to buy a ton of items. Doug, this is one example. You cannot not have money there. So it's really not an increase. Um, it's really just a restoration of of what would normally have been spent.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Maureen.
Thank you for all the work. It's good, very clear, helpful.
Were there any additional um thoughts from the trustees regarding the presentation?
Thank you. I had some additional thoughts, but uh, I tend to speak more than my uh one-seventh, so anyone else wants to get in there. Okay. Well, I'm sure you can always jump in afterwards, of course. Um. So I'm looking at Maureen's top line, and I like the way you broke it down. We are obviously looking at a percentage that's below our tax cap and we keep uh watching that number. But I'm uh, in general, you also, we're looking at a increase of three and a half percent on the budget. And uh, some of my questions are biased and uh, obviously, uh, I just want to state that. I think our first decision is, are we on board with that sort of increase? And if you're on board with a three and a half percent increase. Then a lot of these proposals are sound and strong. And none of us have the background to uh contradict any of our administrators in that sense. But if uh, if you believe that our residents don't want a three and a half percent increase. For two main reasons, we have uncertain state funding coming down. And because uh, our residents have expressed to me personally and to always. That the recent loss of our tax deduction is a huge. Tax increase effect that our residents are feeling. So I look at that three and a half percent increase and I'm concerned that we're planning on eight hundred thousand being increased from the state aid. Maureen, is part of that because it's coming off of such a low number? How would that compare to two years ago? Is that because we uh, we had a low number and that eight hundred thousand is just restoring it, sort of?
Yeah, exactly. That's exactly it, Jeremy. Um, prior, uh, what we, prior to um COVID hitting. We would have anticipated to to receive about one, uh, excuse me, five point three to five point four this year. So it is in line with what we would um typically receive. If anything, I did, um, I I am projecting. Yes, much higher, but I'm I'm also not, I believe not over projecting theirs. On on some of our runs would suggest we make it a hundred thousand more or so, or two hundred thousand more than that number. But um, I think, I think that's the right number. It it seems in in speaking to my colleagues throughout Westchester, um, people feel that that. We will be receiving those funds next year and that most people are planning um accordingly in their budgets. So we we feel comfortable with that projection at this time.
Thank you. Yeah, so that's not a, that's not a, an actual, we're not a dreaming about an eight hundred thousand increase. We're hoping it gets back. Yeah, restory. Level, which I uh, I think that's clear. I do think though, as we look at, you know, the tax cap numbers. We're funding it with reserves. So since most increases never really get taken away. While this year it might only have a one point five percent tax cap number. Any increases we lock into tend to be permanent. And we're not gonna be able to fund that sort of three and a half percent budget every year on reserves. So I uh, you know, I have concerns, I think um, at this point, you know, three and a half percent increases. Are something that we need to work harder on trade-offs. I understand uh Laura and Tesla's, you know, their work, we're adding costs to try to maintain a stronger support for our students. So if we're not on board for a increase, then we should be looking for trade-offs. Uh, Laura, you said it pretty clearly. It's difficult to talk about the projections for those four aids. Is it inappropriate to ask if uh any of those aids that you're projecting are one-to-one aids? Or s- some uh, what sort of, you know, projections? Are these not skills that we think any of our aides in-house could handle?
No, this has nothing to do with a skill set. This is an additional, um, this is additional students. So um, you know, uh, this is not a projection. I I again, let me, let me, let me rephrase that. Again, I I don't want to predetermine anything. We are projecting that we are staying um flat. With this students we currently have. So what's working right now, we're projecting. Hopefully will continue to work or decrease, hoping to see a decrease. The uh, projection of this increase is from students that um. I'm gonna just lump into a category such as CPSE, which are preschoolers that are entering us into kindergarten. Children that were placed on, that families place them in homeschool due to the pandemic. Um, children that we are bringing back from out of district. And children that families perhaps chose to place them for one year in a parental placement due to the pandemic and plan to return. So kind of trying to not break any confidentiality, lumping them to, lumping that together. Hopefully will give you a picture that it's not, um, we're not projecting at this time an increase of what we currently have. In with, in in-house with us right now, if that, if that kind of answers your question, Jeremy?
No, it absolutely answers it. If we had an increased need for four aids. Is an option to consider taking aids away from our general ed classrooms? How many of our aides are a, I mean, how, is it almost every one of our teachers has an aide?
No, only kindergarten, only kindergarten.
And and the process for any, so if there was a student that would require new aid, you know, there is. A data collection form, there's FBA form, so it's not, you know, a a simple process in the sense of, hey, I think Tesla needs an aide. Like there has to be substantial data to support it. And you know, i- if we're talking in the realm of inclusion, a one-to-one aide is not within that realm of inclusion. So if somebody has a one-to-one aide, there's a significant, significant need. And you know, we we tend to, and you know, it it can fluctuate. So like Laura said, it's it's a projection. So we're in March now. So a student can have tremendous progress from now until June. And then by the time we come to the annual review meeting, it's like, all right, you know, he doesn't need the aide or she doesn't need the aide anymore. Or a student that could currently have a one-to-one aide to make such progress where they don't need that aide and we could reallocate such aide to one of the students who might need it. So it's a very fluid process, you know. So there's just a projection that's, you know.
I also want to say, um, our plan, Tesla and I went into our last annual review season, really looking at aids. We really wanted to make sure that we were um not placing aids to make it too restrictive. And part of that process was to recommend an FBA, which is a functional behavior assessment for all of our students. That had one-to-one aids. Unfortunately, and and that was, that to us was a beautiful plan. And um, because it would really not only give us the data to either support the aide, but it would also give us the data to fade the aide. It's not just that you place an aide, you need to come up with, what is the aide, what is it, what is, what is the aide focusing on? And then how are we fading that aide off? And that's Tesla and I went into March thinking, this was what we were taking on. This was one of our goals for the year. Unfortunately, the pandemic really sidelined that, because you have much smaller class sizes. So students may be making more progress with an aide, but there's less students in the class. So we've been hesitant to really make some changes. So as we go through. So I think what we're doing, we've, we've been able to do some FBAs, but I think we're starting over again with our goals to say. We're, we're thinking very positively that we're gonna be in a much better place in September. And children with with aids will have FBAs, and if needed, a BIP, a behavior intervention plan will come out of it. But if not, we need to look at not only what is the role of the aide, what are the skill set that they're focusing on to support the student? And what is our plan to fade? Because it just can't say you're gonna get an aide every year because of this. It really has to be thoughtful, and we tried to do that this year, but kind of got sidelined. So that is our goal going into next year as well.
Thank you both. Thank you both for those responses there. Amy, I was, Amy, I was confused about that line about we're running ahead of forty uh additional birth projections or expectations. Is that a actual birth? So that's more for our five years away number? Or is that a kindergarten birth term, meaning like possible creations of kindergarteners for next year?
Tell me the answer, Amy. So so the reason I noted on the slide, so um, we have a projection. That um, the way that projection is created is it takes in the data from the health department of live birth data. As well as trend data for um individual districts, including um home sales and uh also. Looks at, I guess, the last five years, but again, is driven mostly on when, when there has been a live birth data. In this particular year, um, you know, how how is that translated into the amount of kindergarten students that district would would anticipate in that given year? So in this upcoming year, our trend data would suggest that we were, that our incoming um kindergarten student enrollment. Would have been closer to like a hundred and sixty. And again, I think what happens in Hastings, although um. We do use that as a source of projections for incoming kindergarteners, which are always the most difficult, because again, they're they're new to the district. Um, but of of course, there were some students that their parents, they were obviously born while their parents lived in Hastings, but they have made a move. So the reason we notated that was to show that, you know, we think one twenty-five based upon our last few years. Um, in seeing how that live birth data may have translated into actual enrollment. So although the live birth data was suggesting a much higher number, we felt that the hundred and twenty-five with seven sections um. Is actually lower than than what is the data suggesting. But um, based upon that and also um what the the amount of kindergarten registration we've seen thus far, we feel comfortable with that a hundred and twenty-five projection.
Thank you. So we're not, we're not worried about a hundred sixty-five uh number coming.
No, no. And I think what we have learned is um, every district is different, so we we use that. And again, then look, and then we looked at what our kinder, um, thank you to Amy, and they they were, uh, I think they moved that process up about a week or so. So that also helped us to look at the trend data in terms of what we've seen in registrations in previous years. Um, to feel more comfortable with not using a a higher number.
But we shouldn't. So there's nothing to use that forty additional birth numbers. We don't have to add that to any.
I think it was just to demonstrate, though, that the actual number was significantly higher. So if, you know, because we were um currently. Projecting a seventh section or planning for or allocating for a seventh section kindergarten, of course, we wouldn't do that if. If the number doesn't materialize, it's just also to show that we feel based on that trend data that that number uh is likely. And that we're not overshooting, because it is a little bit higher than we've seen in the last few years, the one twenty-five. You're welcome.
Thank you. Amy, I think they already answered it, uh, Laura and Tesla. But uh, the only aids that would be in a first or a second grade or third grade classroom would be in our uh inclusion classrooms. Or our CTE classrooms. And uh, is, so we don't have aids, we don't have a teacher aide in uh, a lot of buildings. I'm sometimes confused. My, my son or daughter, they sometimes list four teachers. Are those student teachers they're getting confused with? Or are those, are they CT? You talk, I'm sorry.
Um, so this year only, we actually have aids in our first grade classrooms as well, because we went all in with first grade. And in order to um have them in different spaces where there were no bathrooms, we wanted to make sure that we have transport and so on. So this year, we do have aids in first grade, but normally kindergarten is the only classroom, the only grade level. That we have teacher aides in the classroom as just a general ed uh aide. What um our special education uh classes or ICT classes have teaching assistants. So that might be what your, your children are referring to. So in an ICT classroom, there's a gen ed teacher, a special ed teacher and a teaching assistant.
And teaching assistants are not in uh, are not in every uh classroom. How many teaching assistants do we have at Hillside? And I guess they they're not supposed to be helping out with the uh special education needs for new aids, I guess.
So there are, and Laura, feel free to jump in, but there are teaching assistants in every ICT classroom. So, and also in our communications classrooms.
Jeremy, I just want to clarify, what was your question that they shouldn't be helping out with?
My, my question poorly stated, I'm sure.
You're on mute.
Thank you. My question poorly stated, but was trying to make sure. Teaching assistants don't play a role that uh could jump back and forth for what you were requesting for aids. They're very different positions.
They're very different positions. Teaching assistants can actually provide instruction under the supervision of a teacher.
Thank you. So the budgets for uh the middle school and the high school were barely uh any increases at all, especially the way Lou, you explained it. Taking the hundred forty budget item into your line, even though it's uh possibly uh an eighth grade item.
But it's the, it's still, it's still, I I needed to get, I needed, I needed to get, you had seven to twelve, and I needed to get the high school position back. So uh, however it's phrased, I'm thrilled that we have the high school position back if the budget gets passed.
It is the actual increase of FTEs at the high school, if you look at it from a class. That the higher, it's just that they're getting an FTE back at the high school. And the FTEs at the middle school will remain the same, but it'll, it'll just be a different person in that role.
So uh, yep, I'll wrap it up. Uh, in general, you know, I'm, I'm concerned about the three and a half percent. And I like the priorities that our administrators are bringing forward. I think that uh we have to have trade-offs. So I look at that number, you know, a hundred twenty-five kids in kindergarten. And I divide that by seven, and I'm looking at twenty-one kids per class. I think if we need more aids, that's a possibility. We can hold the budget by going with six. Divide that by six, it's twenty-one kids per class for kindergarten. Divide that by six, it's twenty-one kids per class for kindergarten. You know, we look at FMS, you know, our numbers are a hundred and thirty-one. We're trying to divide that by six teachers, which, uh, you know, is certainly a priority. But if we have, uh, budget increases that are, if other, uh, community members or board members feel that three and a half percent is too much. You know, these are divisional numbers here, one thirty-one divided by six. We are well below twenty-five kids per class. And I, I definitely heard what Lou was saying, you know, we, it's a weird average, five kids in this class and twenty-five in that, whether it averages out to twenty-one. The high school schedule, I don't want to touch it. Sixteen years in the building, obviously I should, uh, run away, not just back away. But for our, uh, for our core classrooms, you know, I, I teach with thirty kids in the building and no teacher aide. And I think that's, uh, something we should consider. Our teachers can go to twenty-four kids in a room. If, uh, only if the budget is a concern to other, uh, board members or other residents, because, uh, the proposals are all very strong. And I appreciate the detail, Maureen, and all of our presenters. Thank you very much.
Any trustees who haven't had a chance to, uh, voice a concern or a question? Well, thank you, um, for this first, uh, pass, uh, through the budget managers, managers' presentations tonight. And, um, uh, thanks to each of you. And I know it must have, uh, been arduous to, to, oh, Jody, you have something? You're raising your hand. You're muted.
Um, I, it's not exactly about the budget, but I do want to say it before the administrators leave, if they're leaving for the night. So if you want to finish the budget thing, I'd like to say it, something.
Well, sure. I just, you know, I just wanted to say thank you. And thank you, Maureen, for, um, you starting the, the process off. And thank you, Laura and Tesfa. And I look forward to, and I'm sure the board looks forward to seeing, um, you know, the, the outlined dates that you've showed, uh, as previously, and moving on to the next aspects, um, with more detail. So thank you. Jody?
Yeah, thanks. Um, I, I wanted to jump in before and didn't jump in time after, um, Sophia gave her report. And I'm sorry she's not here. I wanted to thank her for taking the time and all the effort that she and her classmates did for their project. I know I was interviewed. I'm sure some other people on the board were interviewed, if not everybody. Um, and I know it was a tough topic for them, but I, what I was wrote mostly struck by, well, by many things, but um, I think it took some courage on her part to report it at our board meeting. And I think she gives all of us some significant food for thought. Um, and as I was saying to one of the other board members, I think in many ways there's been a lot of tension, um, in the schools and in high school. And I think that the students are obviously aware of it. And I think, um, it makes it hard for them, um, when they sense that kind of tension. I, I, I liken it to what it's like for kids in a family when there's a lot of tension between, um, parents. And the kids pick it up and they know it and they're aware of it and that it, it makes, it adds another layer of difficulty. And and I, I actually take the fact that the students, for whatever reason, they decided to go that route for their project. Um, I think it matters to them. I think their school really matters. I think many people on the, on the board haven't had kids in the high school yet. And the high school tends to be a really wonderful experience. I was just having dinner with my kids who are in their thirties, who were reminiscing about their, um, time in the high school. And by the way, in Dom Cesare's class, who got significant thumbs up. Um, even from my son, who is a middle school social studies teacher. So, um, I, I, I just think that it, it's because it matters to them. They care and they, they love the high school and they love the teachers, the staff who work in the high school, and they want it to be a place that feels, feels good again. So I, I thank her for reporting to us. Um, and I think it is food for thought. The other thing I just wanted to say is I really wanted to acknowledge, um, Melissa Hardisty, and we have a lot of Melissas these days, and Lou for the recognition of the high school. Um, I, I think it's really much to be congratulated. And I know Valerie acknowledged it earlier, but I just wanted to second that and thank both of you for everything that you've done and do throughout the years. Um, that make the high school the kind of place that we get, um, a lot of kudos. So thank you both. And all of your support staff.
Thank you, Jody. Lauren, Lauren, can I have two minutes? If that's possible?
Um, sure.
It's just quick. It's just, I want to thank Jody and everybody in the board, Valerie, for, for her kind words on behalf of the high school. Um, but I, I, I do want to say that, you know, I'm pretty transparent when it comes to school rankings and things like that. Um, and I want to put it out there that, um, you know, I don't really take, you know, I take school rankings with a grain of salt, right? And I am not one, um, to really tout, you know, US News and World Reports, the old Newsweek rankings, uh, the Daily Beast, Niche, you name them all, right? Um, but in a year like with COVID and everything that's been going on, and, um, quite frankly, you know, teachers are stressed, administrators are stressed, and our students, most importantly, are really, really stressed. Uh, it was a little bit of good news. It was nice to hear it, to be acknowledged, uh, for the hard work that, uh, everyone puts in. And, and it's not a high school, it's not a high school accolade. I mean, our kids come to us from a phenomenal middle school, a phenomenal elementary school, um, and a community that really cares. And the reason why we have these kinds of meetings that sometimes get, um, you know, there, there's healthy debate is because our community cares. And I, I don't want people to lose focus in that. Um, and that, you know, we are, we are the village that raises our students. Um, and you know, you know, I could be, we could be number two today and number thirty-seven next year. Um, so let's not lose sight in that. I just, but it is nice in a year like, like this, uh, to get some accolades. And that's a testament to our students, our teachers, our staff, our board, everyone, the community. Um, so thank you again, but Jody, well said.
Thank you, Lou. We will move on, um, from the budget presentation. Um, we'll move on to our business items. Um, there are eleven, um, the first of which was the amended district-wide safety plan, for which we had the public hearing at the beginning of this meeting. Are there any, uh, questions or comments from the board regarding these eleven items?
I did have something, but now I'm, um, I think the numbers changed here. So now I wrote the number down. It was the, uh, staff development, maybe it's the side letter. Is that what it was? Oh, the side letter, I'm just, I was confused about the difference between a staff development committee and a professional learning committee. Was, is that the distinction this letter is trying to get at?
Yes. So the collective bargaining agreement, uh, stipulates a staff development committee. And it, uh, prescribes what the role and responsibility of the staff development committee is. And this side letter of agreement, um, changes in terms of the facilitation to me so that I have the opportunity to lead that work. So that's one distinction. The other is that the side letter indicates that it's inclusive of planning for superintendent's conference days. So one of the other things that our group worked on together last year, um, and actually we, we planned what I believe was an amazing superintendent's conference day for, um, you know, unfortunately was interrupted by the pandemic. So the minute we closed, we immediately needed that day for triage. So we weren't able to bring what we had planned to life. But anyway, it's inclusive of the work for the professional learning for the superintendent's conference day. And it is also around that professional development plan, um, which we have not had the opportunity to revise, which has been necessary because of the pandemic. We had to course correct in terms of what, what we had originally planned and completed for May. Um, so those are the distinctions. I hope that that's helpful.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there a motion to approve business items one through eleven?
So moved.
In the second?
Second.
One favor? I can't see everyone. So, um, I mean, okay. So we don't need to go through. Um, and now we'll move on to the placement and services for CSC and CPSC. Are there any questions or, um, comments regarding these placements? Is there a motion to approve the placements for CSC and CPSC?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor? Um, we'll move on to personnel. Um, there are five appointments. Are there any questions or comments regarding these appointments? Is there a motion to approve these five appointments?
I moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor? There are eight amendments included. Are there any questions or comments regarding these amendments? Is there a motion to approve the eight personnel amendments?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor? Um, leaves of absence. There are eleven leaves of absence listed. Are there any questions or comments regarding these leaves? Is there a motion to approve leaps of absence one through eleven?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor? And, um, there's one resignation. Is there a motion to approve this resignation?
Moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor? Um, the minutes from the February twenty-second, twenty twenty-one Board of Education meeting are attached. Are there any questions or comments regarding these minutes?
Uh, Lauren, I just want to clarify, I know that, um, Lisa Lipton raised a point earlier. I believe you addressed it with attorneys with regards to, um, uh, the, the letter raised. Um, so having discussed that with attorneys, the, the point that you made, um, uh, there's nothing wrong with the, the meeting that we ran. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
I, I just want to echo that and let people who are watching know that we too want to be as open as we possibly can. You know, when, when we hear from attorneys that, uh, it's the policy not to discuss, have, you know, one person discuss another person, uh, who's on staff. We have to respect that that's the policy and abide by that, you know? Um, it, it's not a matter of other people have posted their own resignations. It's a matter of, um, following what's fair to do to our own, you know, with our own employees. Um, and that's what we understood, which is why that letter wasn't posted. Um, even though we may have wanted to, you know, so it, people do want to be as transparent as they can. And, um, but that's not what was recommended in this case, um, by, by lawyers and by our own policies. So I wanted to be clear about that. Um, and I don't know if this is the time either, but to follow up on what, um, Jody was saying either, uh, earlier, um, just acknowledging Sophia, um, Menyara's comments, um, and her research and, you know, thank her for her interest. Um, I'd be, I know she said she interviewed a variety of people, the board, members of the board, administration, all kinds of people in the school. I'd be interested to hear that range of views that she found, um, from all, just so we can hear all perspectives. But I think it's, it is important for people to know too, that, um, administrators have met several times with faculty um, and are working on this, on the communication. So, you know, it's important that it's raised. It's important that it's discussed. Um, and to know that, you know, we are doing our best in that capacity. And so are our administrators and our faculty and trying to, you know, repair where people feel there've been wrongs and, um, to be as, as open and, um, improve the dialogue as best we can.
Thank you, Allison. I, I want to return to, um, the approval of minutes. Um, the minutes have been posted for February twenty-second, twenty twenty-one. Are there any additional questions or thoughts regarding these minutes?
Yeah, I think, uh, part of the public comment might have been directed towards a statement I had made at the previous board meeting. I think I did reference saying that, uh, I was sharing my opinion and I didn't, I said it does not, uh, represent a consensus of the board. So, uh, as to how that might be, uh, have been related, I would think it's accurate to say that we, uh, we take no votes in an executive session. And had we taken votes, we would do that in the public, uh, part of the meeting. And that, uh, I was referencing, uh, not trying to reference any vote that we had taken in a private, uh, executive session, which, uh, we're limited as to what sort of, uh, details we are talking about. But, uh, we do a lot of voting in the public. And we don't do voting before the meetings.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes from February twenty-second, twenty twenty-one?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed?
I'm abstaining.
All right, um, policy, um, Valerie, you've included, um, some new and missing policies, uh, from the compliance audit, audit, policy review. Um, was there something that you wanted to share regarding, um, those that you've attached?
Uh, yes. So thank you. The policy committee, um, reviewed twenty policies that were part of our, um, NISBA compliance, um, audit, uh, conducted, uh, last year. And so the, the, we received these on October of, um, twenty twenty. So, um, in reviewing the several, uh, sections of this, uh, compliance audit, one was the recension of policies. So legal counsel guided us through those, uh, rather than, you know, obviously, um, just taking what the compliance audit indicates is not, you know, the practice of districts. So we do have to check with counsel on whether or not they recommend that these particular policies were rescinded. So that particular part of this audit was taken care of. The next section involves new and missing policies. And again, we defer and, uh, and need the assistance and guidance of legal counsel to make those determinations as to uh, whether or not, um, uh, there's agreement on some of the, the, the policies that are included in that list. So I wanted to just start with a couple that I've hyperlinked and also referenced a few policies that have to be reviewed annually during our reorganization meeting. And I'm not sure if, if that's, um, been our, our practice. So I'll start with the policy having to do with accountability. Um, and these are, this is the board level policy. So accountability. And these are, this is the board level policy. So accountability and board self 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 evaluation. So those are actually two policies that our legal counselor are working on now so that there is a draft. So you have now a draft policy with regards to board operational goals. A legal counsel is drafting or one that hopefully does align with the thinking of the board. I included a policy having to do with self evaluation. We did talk about that in policy committee. And that would be a good practice. Lots of districts do engage in a self evaluation process. So that policy language can can be sort of a starting point for the board to consider. In addition, during the policy committee meeting, we talked about a software that the board could use. So the same software that's used that I use that that's used for a superintendent evaluation. There's a component that the board can use for its own board review. So and that's, you know, something that we can take a look at in terms of a cost. And it's probably about four hundred dollars for that particular use of that software if the board wanted to go down that that road. And what it does is the line allows you to, you know, to look at those policies in one location to add, you know, evidence and, you know, feedback and whatever the board, you know, wishes to to support. You know, the the sort of attainment of of those goals. The other sample policy has to do with, as I said, it's a hyperlinked. It's student learning standards and instructional guidelines. There is board policy in its policy forty two hundred, which is of the policy related to curriculum instruction, curriculum, I'm sorry, curriculum development, resources and evaluation. And it does outline and delineate all the roles with regards to who's responsible in those areas. So it's really a very helpful guide. What it doesn't include, which is, you know, sort of good for us in terms of our review of this policy, is that it doesn't include the learning standards, which at this point are are old and are no longer applicable. So the 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 strike, the policy that council did look at and recommend that we change the language would basically contain practically nothing because it's all old learning standards that were included in the policy. So I just bring that to your attention that it really is, there's no need to include the learning standards in the existing policy forty two hundred. It makes reference to it in very broad ways. And it does that in in doing so helps us to not have to continuously up, you know, upgrade and handle this particular policy. The policies that require a review of the board are the following policies or an annual review. One is the investment. I'm sorry, the the Title One parental involvement policy, that's nineteen hundred. That should be reviewed annually at our reorganization meeting. Policy fifty one hundred, which is attendance, is part of the annual review during our reorganization meeting. Fifty three hundred is the code of conduct. That should also be included in the annual reorganization meeting. Investments is policy sixty two forty should also be included in that annual reorganization meeting. And finally, policy sixty seven forty, which is purchasing, which is one of those required policies that has to be reviewed annually. And so we'll make sure that those are added to the reorganization meeting that occurs in July. The final policy that I hyperlinked is a policy that really didn't need to be changed because it's not something that our food service program run, you know, under Maureen Caraballo's leadership worries about. So there's a new policy that's proposed by NISBA that does have a lot of relevance in certain, you know, school districts, certainly not in ours with regards to this notion of food shaming. So there is no practice of students, you know, who have food taken away from them or food that is not available to them. Or when they're, you know, when their accounts are, you know, underfunded or they are insufficient, there's no policy and there's no practice where those students, you know, are, you know, get to the line and then you know, have food taken from their trays. What we added to memorialize in terms of a practice that does exist in the in 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 the food service program is just referencing the fact that food shaming, it does not occur. So there's an insert that's last paragraph that was added to, we're proposing that be added to this policy. And it reads, the section, the title of the section is changing school meals and prohibition prohibition against shaming. Actions will be taken to prevent meal shaming. As I said, there are no current practices that are even in this category, but we just to make sure that our policy language reflects the practice we want. It's important to add. Students with insufficient funds will be provided with a reimbursable meal of a student's choice. So it's not, you know, some other alternative. Alternative meals are not permitted permitted. Snacks are permitted with the meal and may not be removed if the student's account has insufficient funds. School personnel will work with the family to ensure the account is replenished or if the family qualifies for free or a free or reduced meal program. So that's the new language. And as I said, that, you know, nationally, food shaming, you know, as you, you know, you probably have seen, you know, new segments of the last few years where it's a pretty significant thing that happens in some school districts. It is, it does not happen here. And this language is basically just stating that, you know, we, you know, we don't allow that practice. Other than that, the other policies are, you know, either, you know, they, you know, as at under, at the recommendation of legal counsel, the policy is not new. It is doesn't, you know, represent any required change, nor is it changed as a result of anything that's been amended. The next set of policies that we will take a look at through on March twenty fourth, which is which is our next next policy committee meeting. It's a policy oh one five, which it has to do with bullying and 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 we'll get an opportunity to talk about the the practices that are bullying and harassment is that policy. That's zero one one five. The other policy is is oh one five oh, which actually has to do with this notion of making sure that, you know, we we follow, you know, various guidelines. This is a hu- this is a human. It's HIV and related illnesses. So that's very important. Oh, three one oh, which is the board operational goals that we mentioned. And oh, three two oh is one of the other policies that requires within this collection of policies, the attention of the board and the attention of the the committee or our policy committee. So that's what we have so far in terms of the twenty policies that were reviewed in alignment with the the NISBA compliance audit.
Thank you, Valerie. It really has been, you know, as a member of the policy committee, a really thoughtful, methodical way to go through the audit and the partnership we have with legal counsel on this has been very very helpful. So at this point, if the board wants to take the time to review the policies that are linked, those will continue to be ones that we look at going forward. The the ones to be added. But tonight, we're not making movements on those new additions. So it's Maureen's show again for the construction update.
Okay, yes, this will be very quick. I'm going to get back on here. I'm going to share my screen and pull up the presentation, a few slides to share with the board and the public just to, you know, give you some sense of where they are with, we're going to really just be focusing as we have been on the hillside edition and a couple of pictures and give you an update on what, you know, how much has been done and what we anticipate in the next few weeks. So, okay. So days, okay, here we go. Okay, so just a really quick couple photos for you. So on the left hand side of the screen, you'll see this is a picture which shows that the the existing foundation on the on the side of hillside in which the addition will be connected to, well, you know, one part of the addition. And and you can just see here where the, how far they had to dig down to now create the new foundation and footings for the, where the addition will be constructed on top of. So I think that that was a good picture to show the, you know, how far down they've gone so far. I'm on the right as as we knew about and as we had planned for, the the site, it does have quite a bit of rock removal. And that was accounted for, planned for, and is part of this this part of construction we're in right now. And and it's so far, although a lot of rock is there, nothing that has not been anticipated. So that is good. Again, this is just another view of kind of showing the where the existing footing of the building was and and now where the new, you know, the, how far they had to kind of go down to start the the new foundation of the addition of the building. And just some more site photos to kind of just show as as we're going to be watching and it'll be nice as we see the progress continue, just to kind of have these different pictures that we can reflect back on. Again, just, these are just showing the the amount of rock on the site. And again, it's a very, it's a, you know, fairly tedious process to remove. And they're constantly hauling off a lot of this rock off site. And it's just interesting as you can kind of see it taking form and, you know, the the amount of mobilization that's occurred already. So again, just to kind of recap what what has happened since the last time I've reported out to the board. So over the last week, the building excavation work has progressed. And now in terms of they reached the depth for the concrete footing at the backside of the building. So again, they they've hit the depth they need to start, be prepared for that work, which is great because that means that's, you know, the rock is out of that portion and and they're at where they need to be. Currently, this week, the site contractor is digging and removing additional rock, which is in terms of the middle section of the building. And that really is the side of the building in which the basement and the first floor meet. And the majority of this excavation is rock and they will be hammering intermittently over the next few days. And we thank the, you know, everyone for their support and their patience as some of this drilling and they have been doing some of that earlier and before the students arrived, but we're making really great progress. Over the next two weeks, the site work will progress toward the front of where the new addition is going to be built. So that that's a place in which they're kind of, you're bumping out toward toward the playground area. Our concrete subcontractor is expected to mobilize by the end of the month. And again, that that's an important part of the develop, you know, the beginnings of the building being built. The electricians that have been working to create the connections that will be brought over from one side of the existing building, the closet, to the new, where the new additional will meet that space. They've already accomplished eight hundred feet of a two thousand foot pipe in the ceiling. So they're making excellent progress and we're very happy with that. And then also just to to update you, we'll be, of course, communicating out through email blasts and postings that during the week of our spring vaca- break, that the asbestos abatement in the area in which we'll attach to the new building is going to occur. And that's it's room one fifty five in the stairwell. There is a small abatement that'll be happening and we'll be, of course, posting well in advance of that. And it's a good week to get that work done so that when everyone returns, we'll be free and clear. So that concludes my update. And next week, at our next capital update, I'll be giving an update on the cornice work at at this building because by then we'll have the information we need to make a determination on how we'll move forward with that. And I will be able to provide a status update on our budgets for both the middle school auditorium and the music rooms, which we are planning to submit to the state within the next few weeks. And they are tracking on or below budget at this time. As well as a continuing hillside update.
Thank you, Maureen.
You're welcome.
I see the site most mornings and it's exciting to see the the routine progress. They really are moving forward.
And the weather has been really cooperating with us. So that's, that's good news, not like the first week.
The next item on our agenda is to discuss the draft calendar. It's attached. I don't know if Valerie, if you wanted to provide some foundational understandings that went into this draft calendar.
Um, so I want to thank in advance the bargaining unit members who participated in a number of meetings, starting back in September, in December. Once the draft calendar from Southern Westchester BOCES was established, which is the sort of starting point for the school districts to start, who who are members of that particular BOCES to start looking at the development of their own calendar. So while policy forty one ten indicates that the superintendent is responsible for the preparation of the school calendar to be presented to the board for adoption, certainly input and feedback is, as I said, the first steps in terms of soliciting that from the leaders of the bargaining units. So last week, I responded to a question about the involvement of the bargaining units in the development of the calendar. And I used a word, I used the word endorse, that they had endorsed it. Given that they do not need to vote on the calendar and their only involvement is the extent to which the calendar language, you know, whether it be the number of instructional days or how parent teacher conferences are organized or references to parent to superintendent's conferences. Otherwise, it's only the the collective bargaining unit language that would require the involvement of the part on the part of that bargaining unit leader. So I just wanted to make that clear. And if there, if there's any contractual obligations whatsoever, that has to be taken up with that respective bargaining unit. So endorse sent the wrong message about the extent of their involvement as is explained by our policy. So I wanted to just review how we got to the draft calendar that's up, that's been presented to the board for consideration and adoption. First, as I mentioned, the Southern Westchester BOCES calendar is reviewed because we have children who participate in Southern Westchester BOCES, some who go there for their career in technical education services. Our our consideration when we're determining the holidays in particular, such as spring break and the April, I'm sorry, the winter, midwinter break, break and the the spring break. Because we wouldn't want our calendar decisions to impact the ability for those children to receive instruction. So we would want them to miss a whole week because we're off seat with the the BOCES calendar. So that's a a decision, as I said, the district start with first to make sure that that they don't intentionally in developing the calendar cause that to happen. Because those programs do result in, do require a certain amount of seat time and in order for them to actually obtain the credential associated with that particular program. So that first meeting that that the bargaining unit presidents and vice presidents were invited to was December twenty first. And what was provided at that December twenty first meeting to the bargaining unit leaders was that the start of the school year being September first. So that's been on the table from the very conversation, the very first conversation that we've had. Parent teacher conferences were listed as November third and tenth. And the reason why that's so important is that we have to make sure that we cover the the appropriate number of hours. If we do have a half day dedicated to parent teacher conferences, we have to follow the New York State laws with regards to, you know, how much time a a day, I mean, how many hours are in a half day? And so it's five hours for elementary and five and a half for secondary. That constitutes a superintendent's conference day. So if we we ever fall underneath that, we have to make sure that either we put the two half days together to make a whole superintendent's conference day or, you know, some other decision. So I just want, that's a one of the major considerations. All observances on tonight's proposed calendar, except for Dewali, was on the first draft discussed with the bargaining unit leaders on December twentieth. Twenty first, I'm sorry. The April break at that point was, the proposed time was April eleventh through the fifteenth. An additional meeting took place in January to finalize discussions having to do with language in collective bargaining agreement. We talked about in that particular instance, the parent teacher conferences, the superintendent's conference days and the the number of instructional days that are required. There was a question posed by a board trustee about starting the school year after Labor Day because our neighbor districts are doing so. The feedback from the bargaining unit leaders that I did share with the board indicated that they their preference was to reopen on September 1st rather than losing those three days at the beginning of the school year, because it would mean that those three days would have to come out of the midwinter, midwinter break or some other place. So the the conversation or the feedback from the the bargaining unit leaders was that the reason why they didn't want to shorten the midwinter break is because, especially at the high school level, it was a time for parents to take their children to college for college visits during that time. So it's both the midwinter break of February 21st to the 25th, as well as the April break from April 11th through the 18th. So the, as I said, each the the bargaining unit leaders looked at the proposed dates that would have to be deducted in order for us to make up for the three and felt that we should stick with the reopening on September 1st as opposed to September 9th. The only other discussion had to do with Juneteenth. There was a, there was a reference to perhaps maybe being able to not be off on Juneteenth. Juneteenth was is now considered a public holiday in New York State. So the only consideration is when Juneteenth falls. So if Juneteenth falls on a Saturday, we would not need to take Friday off, for example. If Juneteenth falls on a Sunday, we would, under New York State law, be required to to observe it on that Monday. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention as well. So the calendar that you have, you know, as I said, has, you know, we received feedback from the collective bargaining leaders, and this is the calendar that we feel we we, you know, best supports and meets the needs of the students and in our needs for the coming school year. And I want to thank Fee for doing all the work of creating this. So she's the one who created this design. She's the one who has all the archives of how many, you know, when we offer, when we've opened before Labor Day. She has, you know, she's worked very closely with the bargaining unit leaders to make sure that, you know, days have been counted. And, you know, there's, you know, full understanding of what's been proposed to make up this particular calendar for the 2021, 2022 school year.
Thank you, Valerie. I I do notice, I believe that there's a typo on November 4th, Diwali. I believe it's D I W A L I.
We'll go back and change that.
Other than that very small concern, are there any thoughts from trustees or questions regarding the draft calendar?
Valerie, besides the the three river towns that are starting after Labor Day, are you aware of any school district that would be starting before Labor Day? Because I know of a couple others that are not, that are following the Dobbs Ferry, Irvington and Artsley model. Are you, are you aware of a west, any other school district that's doing what we're proposing?
They probably are because it does traditionally happen. Let's see if I have any, anything here that I can look at. I only have the information that's relative to the the districts that are north of us in terms of Dobbs, Artsley and Irvington. Typically, you know, districts, you know, again, sometimes they're in sync and sometimes they're not. So and it also differ is according to one's collective bargaining agreement, you know, and some bargaining agreements, there's there's prohibition against starting before September 1st in terms of even superintendent's conference days. So so, you know, I, you know, it really does require looking at any particular CBA or collective bargaining agreement to see what the language is that restricts or prohibits them. We have specific language we know about with regards to superintendent's conference days and that it must be four. So, you know, we couldn't shift out of that. Or that we, there's a specific language to parent teacher conferences and that parent teacher conferences are considered superintendent's conference days. And we have to make sure that we are honoring the language of the collective bargaining agreement. So it's a little more complicated than, you know, just looking specifically at who's doing it. It's a lot of the decisions are driven by the collective bargaining agreements. But as I know in our district, as I, as we know from from Lou Eddy Pietro, who is here, he indicated that he certainly recalls times when the school year started before Labor Day and that it's not an unusual practice for that to occur.
Thank you. Yeah, it is an unusual practice, but I also do remember days where we've done that. There have been times where the calendar forced us and it is absolutely unusual when that happens. But the actual question, you're not aware of any other district then is what the answer would have been. There is no other district that you know of that's doing this right now?
We know, we only looked at Artsley, Dobbs Ferry and Irvington. We didn't look at other districts. And so we looked at the districts that are our neighbors because we do talk to each other and, you know, work with each other. But sometimes districts, you know, have their own reasons for doing what they're doing. And I think in this case, you know, I want to respect the thoughts of the bargaining unit leaders with regards to their recommendation.
Thank you. I'd like to point out some differences. We have 182 days in our contract, and I think that's a good thing compared to some of our neighbors, 181 and 180. And I think the upcoming school year is a priority for getting students their days. What concerns me is when we're getting them their days. Other school districts are using of our River towns, one of them is using the last day of the year as a superintendent conference day. I think that's a strong choice because as all of us know or remember, teachers tend to start packing up their rooms before that last week in June. So that last week, though they're student days, they're not our strongest student days. And if the more days we can move towards that last week, a superintendent's conference day there instead of a in March is a stronger idea, there's not a lot of instruction happening. As teachers pack up, they even stop giving homework pretty early in June. It's always a strange thing when your second or fourth grader comes home and goes, we're done with homework for the year. So I'd like to focus on pushing things to the back as a suggestion of improvement. It goes the same with the first week that's being proposed. Those first three days are important days where you're learning your schedule, you're meeting your new teachers. And by having it before Labor Day, and we've heard more families concerned about that than about the split midweek vacation. By having days before Labor Day, students that miss those days and attendance is not similar for before Labor Day as post Labor Day. They are missing days to learn their schedule, meet their teachers. So any days that can be shifted where we would have more students in attendance would be better. So the days that we've, I've heard suggestions from and I've given before, Eid is a holiday that can be recognized. It doesn't have to be a school closure. Superintendent's Day at the end of the year instead of in the middle. Half days, our other neighbor districts, they're using half days at the end of that week because we know that the teachers stop instruction to some degree after their finals, while they're calculating their grades after they've packed up. So this calendar concerns me. I've shared that in emails before, but this is a public meeting, even if it's only 20 people watching. This calendar does not reach the priorities that I want to see for student days when they occur, when they're scheduled. The other districts, they don't have a conference day in March. We got a full break in February and April. They go straight through on March. More can be done. I've expressed it in emails. This is not a calendar that I'm supportive of. It's disappointing that we continue to ignore the pre-Labor Day start that's been expressed. It's very unusual and it has a negative effect on our families and our students. I hope that there's other people who feel the same way.
I I had also written in about trying to move till after Labor Day, mainly because, you know, I find that start and stop not the best, not great for middle school and elementary school kids, days in and then all those days out. And then coming back in is kind of jarring for them, having to learn everything all over. It's as if they haven't been there. But I do understand the difficulties in finding those other days from what you've described. So it's a, it's a conundrum. I mean, I, if there's any way to to further look at it to find those days, I do think it would be worth it. I know you've already spoken to the bargaining units who have signed off on it. So that makes it more complicated, but just my two cents.
I don't want to lose what Lou indicated with regards to the priorities of families who need to visit colleges on those days that days would come from. So, you know, the bargaining unit leaders did look at the proposed time of taking two days out of the winter break. You know, that was the, that's the first place to take it from. And that would shorten, you know, for those community members who have, you know, seniors who are in many, they weren't, they haven't been able to visit colleges. You know, this gives them that first opportunity in February to do so, and then again in April. So I I have heard from, you know, a couple of parents with regards to that. And I'm sure, you know, Lou Eddy Pietro represents, you know, many more people that he knows of. You know, certainly having been in the high school for 16 years, he knows those are two dates in the calendar that parents whose children are going or looking at colleges do value that time. So I I respect the fact that that is something that the calendar allows parents to be able to do. So but if, you know, there, you know, and as I said, we looked at other other opportunities, you know, and we do need, you know, time. I mean, you know, we talked about, I think Lauren Tespa talked about, you know, the needs of, you know, supporting the needs of students who have, you know, you know, whose IEPs may require, you know, teachers to, you know, update their skills. I mean, not having any time, any professional learning time in the calendar to do that, you know, would not be a recognition that that's a priority for the school system. So we only have, you know, the beginning and then all, again, our superintendent's conference days, you know, are contractual. So the first two days, I mean, there's something that happens on the first day, you know, that, you know, there's something that happens on the second day. So it's not all time that teachers are, you know, you know, learn, you know, sitting together to learn together. They have time built in, you know, to, you know, also come together. I think it's going to be really important in the coming school year, you know, for there to be this sort of, you know, opening that's a celebration, you know, people coming back together. But also some time for them, you know, to to work together. So that's, you know, again, that's contractual language that we, you know, we do follow. And as as well as the fact that, you know, there's a lot of professional literature on the value of professional learning, especially when we're talking about, you know, really making sure, as Tespa and Laura indicated, we're bringing back more students from out of district placements. And and we have co-teaching partnerships and, you know, and we definitely need to make sure we provide time during the course of the school day, not, you know, pushing it off to the end of the day where teachers have, you know, responsibilities after the end of the day. Yeah. And, you know, can't, you know, manage, you know, more meetings. So having the time dedicated to professional learning, you know, those five hours for elementary and five and a half hours for the secondary on March 16th is valuable. That was the calendar this past year as well. You know, we started the year with all of our superintendent's conference days moved up to the very beginning of the school year. So we had one scheduled for March and the and the parent teacher conference days, as I said, are also considered superintendent's conference days. They're not, you know, separate days. So it's you're either instructional or non-instructional. So there's not a lot to work with in terms of additional days in the in the calendar. And and quite honestly, that very last day, you know, having a superintendent's conference day that can be used for professional learning is, you know, kind of like a waste, you know, you know, in terms of, you know, not, that's not a optimal time for learning and you really can't do much with it. So, you know, in recognition of, you know, the expectations for, you know, teachers to be able to work with lots of different learners, it's best to give them the time when they can use it for professional learning and they can work together, you know, collaborating on creating lessons and learning new practices and and, you know, strategies that, you know, that support the learners and give them a sense of, you know, efficacy that they, you know, and working together can really impact the outcomes for students. So, you know, from that standpoint, I think that it is valuable to have the time for learning built in for the professionals. And it's not a lot. So it's just, you know, basically two days, 186-day year.
I know, also speaking from the perspective of high school students or high school parents, that there's a concern that, given the later start of the year, kids, as it is, seem to feel that they're somewhat of a disadvantage when it comes to getting all the material in to review by the time the exams come around. At least that's a, that's a concern that's been expressed to me from high school parents. So I think, you know, having that lead time of a few days at the beginning, earlier on in the school year would be beneficial to those folks. And I also don't want to lose sight of the fact that one of our sister river districts that does have, that does recognize Eid and the way that we're turning towards Dobbs. And they do have a, an abbreviated break for April. And I know that that was something that our community felt was not, that that they felt was a disadvantage to us. So I would be in favor of approving the calendar that's before us and and making the changes, even though that means it's an earlier start. I believe the bargaining unit representation that this is not unfamiliar to them to start off earlier in the year. And yeah, I think that that's the, if that's, you know, what we need to do to get the days in to maintain the week breaks that we have, we're not going to be able to pack everything in. I wish that we could, but that's just kind of, you know, how it's sometimes how they, and and I think, you know, I think when we think about taking away established holidays from other ones that have been traditionally recognized, that's also problematic if you do it kind of spur of the moment, whether that's Easter Monday or the second day of Rosh Hashanah. I mean, all of those things, I don't think that you do right before you're contemplating approving a calendar. I think you do that with a good amount of foresight. And I do think that it's important, given that Eid has not been recognized thus far, that we've been hearing this from community members for a long time. I can certainly say that, you know, since my 10th grader was in the second grade and I was a member of the PTSA representation, we would hear from parents oftentimes wondering about that discrepancy and why there was no recognition for, you know, one of the great religions of the world. So I just wanted to put it on the record for why I do support the calendar before us.
Thank you, Sylvia. I I very much appreciate what you're saying in your words and I agree with you. I do think that, for me, it also matters that we pay attention to what the bargaining units say and think and want in terms of when school starts. I remember when we switched years ago to starting before Labor Day and it just never felt right. But I think teachers prefer to be able to have more time off during the year. The only thing I don't, I can't quite get with is, I don't think we make decisions about having a week off so that kids can visit colleges. That doesn't sit well with me. I mean, for kids who are going to visit colleges, you figure out times. I do think that there are some schools, I don't know if we do this. But I know from my admissions work in the city, there are lots of schools that give kids a certain number of days off that they're allowed to take from school to visit colleges. But I don't think we base our calendar around kids visiting college. But I think that if we have that, those weeks, I do think for families, for teachers, for people having those breaks during the year, and if you so choose to visit colleges, then so be it. I I think it's useful. I think I, I think it's useful. I think people need breaks throughout the year. And I think if they want to, bargaining unit is strongly in favor of starting before Labor Day. I think it's important for us to respect that.
There is a whole industry within college admissions that recognizes those weeks as student visiting weeks. And they, you know, they bank on families and students arriving on campus. I mean, not during COVID, but arriving on campus during those weeks. They have particular visiting programs for students. So it's, it's not just that parents should be left on their own or students left on their own to find a weekend or to take a long day off or get a day excused from school, but rather that there are, you know, there's a whole admissions mechanism that's anticipating students to be visiting during those times and programs that are arranged for them. So it's, you know, whether, whether you like that as part of the admissions process or not, it's something that exists and certainly we shouldn't ignore the fact that we'd want, you know, our students to have those opportunities to participate in programming. You know, I wish my admissions worked, but it does.
There are lots of weeks, though, that students have off. They don't just have off the weeks that we have off. And kids who go to independent schools have completely different vacations than we do. So there are lots of times that kids, that, you know, I'm, I run an admissions department. I know about this stuff. And I think there are lots of times there are ways that kids can visit and get the full, you know, full-on experience.
I know there's discomfort about starting before Labor Day among some families. And I certainly respect that difference. So I do know that historically it has occurred before. And I just feel like this year is just the luck of the draw where certain holidays fall in September. That it is just, it's, you know, I, I've was a teacher and started before Labor Day. I was a teacher and started after Labor Day. You know, I think, I, I'm actually quite pleased with this calendar and the way it's respecting a wider array of holidays and being more inclusive of our community. I also would be in favor of the proposed calendar.
Yeah, I would, I'd certainly like to start after Labor Day. But I would probably trade out some days for this, on the spring break. But we are where we are and a lot of research and discussion's been done. So I'm happy to, of all the sorts to die on, this is not one for me. So I'm happy to, I'm happy to approve it.
Is there a motion to approve the proposed calendar?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? We do have some new business. It's a resolution for New York State Funding for Public Education. You know, Valerie, if you wanted to provide some background to its inclusion on our agenda this evening?
So actually, the NISBA also shared some information today about the American Rescue Plan stimulus package. And this is really to make sure that, that funds do come our way. And it's a, you know, another reinforcement of, you know, certain practices, the foundation aid formula, all the things that, that were a part of the beginning of, you know, our budget presentation that, that's always included that, you know, that these practices that disadvantaged districts or that formulas that are antiquated and use older census, you know, data, you know, further make it difficult in a tax cap compliant environment, you know, to, to meet the needs of, you know, of the community and also meet the, the challenges associated with contractual changes and other kinds of changes that just happen every year, regardless, you know, healthcare cost and contributions to retirement. So this is a way to continuously remind, you know, through a resolution, you know, the, you know, the community through the board's commitment and, and advocacy, you know, the need to make sure that we continuously press upon our legislators, you know, a priority around, you know, ensuring that there's a fairness in how decisions are being made. So we don't really know how the 12.5 billion of the funding, I'm sorry, not 12.5, the nine billion of the K-12 funding that's coming to New York is going to be used. And, you know, while, yes, there are high-needs districts that absolutely do need, you know, a lot of support and assistance, you know, districts that don't have, you know, you know, new sources of revenue and have been impacted by diminished state aid, not state aid, but a sales tax and, you know, other revenue sources, you know, are still impacted and still have to ensure that we, we cover the cost for, you know, what it means to reopen fully and do so safely with additional resources, whether it's, you know, different kinds of filters or desk barriers and the need to make sure that we can, you know, engage in the surveillance testing. And hopefully that continues to be a free resource for the school district. So this is just, as I said, another public advocacy effort through a resolution, which is, you know, what NISBA, you know, does recommend and Westchester-Puny School Boards Association recommends to ensure that school districts make it known that we, there still needs to be a focus on equitable funding regardless of, of, of the school district. And so these are the sort of components of all of that advocacy that the board is considering tonight and that we can continue to promote and have it on our website and so forth. So I want to thank Melissa Dela Borrera for putting it here and making sure that we do our part to continuously advocate for fairness in funding.
Are there any thoughts regarding this resolution?
I, I just wanted to also mention what's important in that, that resolution. If, if people in the community look through it, there, in addition to like the current challenges, there's other things that are proposed within state budgets that are very problematic to us. And, and many of those are covered in that resolution tonight. And as though sometimes things that don't seem to be within budget proposals, although they may not, you know, appear to have dollar amounts associated with it, many of the, the items that are listed in the advocacy do include some shifts that districts such as ours have experienced with some changes in the way things are funded. So again, it's, it's really important for our legislators to keep their eye on those as well.
Yeah, I think, you know, there have been individual voices and we've encouraged individual voices within the community to reach out to legislators in New York regarding this funding or, or budgetary issues. I think I would be in favor of, of making a resolution at the board to state that we're in favor of these items. Because it does send a message to Albany when our district is among other districts that are simultaneously making similar or the same resolution, which is what is occurring. Is there a motion to approve the resolution as stated for New York State Funding of Public Education?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? We have our second public comment period. During this public comment period, you may speak on any district business. Please state your name. And if you're a resident of Hastings, then please adhere to our policies regarding not speaking on personnel issues during public comment. If you could use the raise your hand feature at the bottom of the screen, Melissa Dela Borrera will, will call on you. Anne Melvin?
Hi, can you hear me? So first of all, I wanted to congratulate Dr. Henning Piedmont and Melissa Samansky for bringing the Hastings High School to the ranking of number two in the Westchester Magazine. It's always had a somewhat high rank, you know, low, you know, great ranking. Last year it was at seven, but this is the first time the high school's ever been ranked at number two or anywhere near it. And if you start looking into the numbers and how they achieve the numbers, you'll find that they were achieved in part by the brilliance of Dr. Henning Piedmont and Melissa Samansky. So I wanted to thank you both very much. I didn't want that to go overlooked. Thank you. Regarding Allison Andrews sharing her thoughts on Sofia Manero's letter read, I agree with Allison's curiosity as to other people's thoughts and experiences and perceptions regarding this topic. Because parents were interviewed for this assignment. However, in the reading of the assignment, that was completely left out. I am curious to know what the teacher intended in this assignment. I find it very concerning. Was it a research paper? Because we know in research, you can't omit parts of your findings. And I think it's, I'm glad that Allison brought it up because it was a real concern of mine. So again, thank you, Dr. Henning Piedmont and Melissa, for your fabulous work for the district. And thank you Board of Ed for your immense time. Bye.
Thank you.
I don't see any more hands raised.
Thank you, Melissa. Are there any comments from the Board about this evening?
I have a comment that's kind of out of left field, but just some food for thought. When we have our meetings, and this is about the people who are on the screen at the moment, sometimes we call people miss, sometimes we call them doctor, sometimes we call them by their first name. I'm not sure how people make those decisions. But for me, I would be more comfortable with, I guess everybody can do what they want, but it just seems, I feel like everyone should be called by their first names. We work together. We work on our first names. People may feel differently, but you know, when Melissa Samansky gets her doctorate, are we suddenly going to call her Dr. Samansky and not call her Melissa? I mean, I say as someone who is a doctor, I get called miss all the time. I get called misses all the time. I can't stand that. I feel like Mrs. Meyer is my mother or my grandmother. And I always say to people, you can call me Jody, you know, that's fine. So it may be my own thing, but I'm just putting it out there for some food for thought as we continue in our work together.
I do want to be able to call Melissa Dr. Samansky for a while, though, right? You gotta.
We'll call you Dr. Samansky all the time because then, I get it then, I do, I do.
I have a ways to go yet. But what I can say to all of it is that I, when I first started as an educator, it was in New York City in a progressive private school. And my students even called me by my first name because that was the culture there. And I transitioned into public school education and the culture there was to call by the last name. And all of it to me just boils down to how we interact respectfully with each other. And, and I don't disagree that having a norm in some way to shape it could be valuable, just so that we all kind of don't fumble over it. But, but it really all boils down to respect, right?
I, I do agree completely with that. And I also feel that if, if for Valerie, if it feels more respectful for us to call you Dr. Henning Piedmont, I, I can get with that. But I just, it's something that I always notice in the meetings, this kind of somewhat randomness of how people get addressed.
Now, I actually had a similar, I taught in a similar school environment where students did call me Valerie. So I, you know, it isn't something that is, is, and they called me Valerie when I had my doctorate. So it wasn't, you know, there wasn't that, you know, formality. So I think whatever people want to do, I, I think, I agree with Melissa, as long as it's out of respect. I think people are, you know, they, they, they're using, you know, what they view to be, you know, a pathway for respect. But certainly, I think, you know, whatever people would like to do would be fine with me.
Makes sense. Thanks, Dr. Henning Piedmont.
I'd like to speak briefly. Our student representative was mentioned there in the last comment. I think a lot of us were interviewed by more than one student. And my understanding of that project was that the, the students were allowed to choose a topic. They weren't told by the teacher what to choose. As to whether people are curious about how the parental interviews went, it's quite common to leave out information from a report, especially when a category that you interviewed was not conclusive in any way. So I wasn't sure if that was implying that something was missing. I thought the report was rather clear. And it, it exposed something that our community is quite aware of, that the, the board and the administration and the teachers as a, have, have, it's been, it's been assumed that there's not a lot of trust going on between all three groups. So I don't think leaving out the teachers needed to be, leaving out the parents was really accurate as you referenced, that very interesting student comment that we had. If there's nothing interesting or conclusive in the parental interviews, there's nothing to report about that. And I, we always appreciate learning about the students from our two voices that bring it to us.
I'm not dismissing what she brought forward. I just was also curious about all the other groups. Besides, there were also several besides parents, I believe. So, you know, when we talk about being respectful, it is important to, to give a 360 look. And just helps people come to the table with a fuller understanding, I think. So, you know, and to know that, that we all want to see things move forward in a way that is, that is, that's respectful and that makes people feel heard and like we're working towards, you know, the goals that we all have. And I think there, there, I think there is a lot of common ground that could bring people together. It's, it's a matter of communicating and, and people feeling heard. So, you know, I appreciate the, the, the conversation.
Oh, and if some of it was inconclusive, she could report that too, right? I mean, if the parental interviews were inconclusive or not all on the same page or with whatever other group, that could also be part of what gets reported.
Yeah, I mean, I had a couple of thoughts. Well, I appreciate Sophia bringing that to the board. And I guess perhaps other people had reports as well. And maybe that was one report of several. I'm not, I'm not sure how broad the. And I thought she brought up some great points. I think there are other points, whether or not she should. I think there are other points, whether or not she should have brought them up or not. You know, I don't know. I don't really, that's not really a debate. I want to have she brought up what she brought up. But, but I think what's been going on in the town and during COVID and during, after the George Floyd incident, and, you know, a variety of the challenges around the books, which are tied up in everything from censorship to First Amendment rights to children feeling safe, you know, to autonomy of teachers, to, you know, how curriculum has been designed and developed, when it was designed and developed, seven, 10, 15 years ago, what's happened since. I think that it's just so easy to frame these from one perspective, these issues. And, you know, what's, what's so hard is, we receive notes from community members all the time taking a position or a point of view. What's a bit frustrating being on the board is oftentimes they're written as if we're narrow-minded, myopic people, only saw one thing, and because that's all they heard us talk about. Of course, at a board meeting, we can't have the rich, robust dialogues we'd all love to have. Doesn't mean we're not having them with our friends and family. Doesn't mean maybe one, one or two board members are getting together and having them, much like people in the community are. But I think one of the things that's been most frustrating to me, look, I'm going to be honest here. I see, I see mistakes parents have made. I see mistakes teachers have made. I see mistakes administrators have made. I see mistakes board members have made over this year. And to call them mistakes, some of them were really mistakes. Some of them were people with as much information as they had at the time, when we're going through a crazy time and making a judgment call. By the way, we're all raising children. Some of us, you know, Jody, your children are already raised, but we're all, you know, raising children and trying to keep our jobs and businesses going. I mean, we're just bombarded. To say things are stressful is an understatement. And the one thing I can say about everyone in this board is everyone is really working as hard as they can. Everything, one of the things I can say about every administrator is they're working as hard as they can. About spoken to all the teachers, but I know they're working as hard as they can. I can only imagine having to come to work in those environments. Most of us don't have to. We can sit behind a screen, and it's not like the teacher. So, everyone has a legitimate beef right now. And I think it's really important to keep that in mind, and, and none of them are invalid. And, and I think one of the most frustrating things to me over the past year has been the, the tone in which different parties have addressed each other, because everyone's got a legitimate concern with things they're feeling right now. And the tone that comes across sometimes at meetings, sometimes in written communications, in, you know, reported communications that I've heard, is a tone of some party is disrespecting me. And I don't think that's what's happening. I think there is a feeling of disrespect that's landing on someone, and that's legitimate. But I think that is happening much more than anyone is intentionally disrespecting someone. And I think it's really important that we keep that in mind right now. I, I think a whole bunch of issues could have been handled differently, and maybe it would have been better. But we are where we are, and everyone in this system is really doing their best under extremely difficult circumstances. So, I want to say thank you to the teachers that have been coming in every day and under all sorts of circumstances we know about and ones we don't, to the administrators who have been juggling in a tremendous amount of stress and change and daily new, just balls dropped in your lap, to board members who've been doing our best to really kind of figure out where and how to make the best decisions, to, and, you know, to the students who are kind of bearing the brunt of it all at younger ages. And, and that's, you know, I mean, I see it firsthand. I know everyone on this call sees it firsthand. It's, it's hard, you know? When your kid comes up to you that loves school and says, I hate school, you're kind of like, ah, yeah, I kind of get it right now. I, it does kind of feel a little crappy. It doesn't have anything to do with the teachers. It doesn't have anything to do with the parents. It has to do with this crazy time we're in. So, I think we all have to just kind of hit the pause button a little bit on the, on the anger and, and really come back and say, hey, here's how I felt. Here's what didn't work, and let's talk about it. So, you know, I've been feeling this for a long time, never really had a venue to share it. I think this came up as an opportunity to share it. So, I just want to say, say those words. So, thank you, everyone.
I appreciate that, Doc. Thank you. Is there a motion to close the Board of Education meeting?
Moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.
Night, everybody.
To everyone.